Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for April 16th, 2024. I'm Carrie Marnock, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to ending extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law in March 29, 2023. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations in the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube. We have the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Confirming that members anticipated on the agenda are remotely present. Members, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Pratsky?
Yeah.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Great. Staff, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
Bob Federico?
Yeah.
Great. All right. Ground rules for the meeting for presenters and applicants on the agenda. The Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation, speak to their application. Participants will write their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair. Each vote taken by the Board will be conducted by roll call vote. For public comments, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone dial, star nine, raise your hand, no way to be recognized. Please know party or phone number will be visible. By Zoom, click, raise hand on the bottom of your screen, ways to be recognized. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, Chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for comments. And then I think that is it. So with that, why don't we get started and bring in our attendees? So first on our agenda tonight, we have the public hearing for consideration of the application for site plan approval submitted by the town of Northborough for the construction of a new 30,000 square foot plus or minus fire station and associated improvements at the property located at 61 and 65 West Main Street, MAP 63, Parcell 9 and 10, and 10 Monroe Street, MAP 63, Parcell 7, in the downtown business district and groundwater protection overlay district area 3. The public hearing notice has been filed, and I will read that notice here into the minutes. In accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 16th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. to consider the application for site plan approval submitted by the town of Northborough for the construction of a new 30,000 square foot plus and minus fire station and associated improvements at the property located at 61 and 65 West Main Street, MAP 63, Parcell 9 and 10, and 10 Monroe Street, MAP 63, Parcell 7, in the downtown business district and groundwater protection overlay district area 3. Applications and plans are on file in the town's clerk office and planning office. It may be viewed on the Planning Department's webpage at the townofnorthborough.mass.us under the Planning Department pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. An act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting from a PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Please click on the URL as posted in the public hearing notice or join by phone. 646-876-9923, webinar ID 89049909408, pass code 531739. There's also a live stream YouTube link also listed in the public hearing notice filed April 2nd, 2024, and April 9th, 2024 by the Chair. So with that, why don't we bring in our group and get started with this item? So I see, do we have everybody here? Who is taking the lead? Mitch, you're taking the lead from, you're coming in as Dawn for, in Dawn's place tonight?
Yes, Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, Dawn Rand, couldn't be here. She asked me to attend in her place. I'm here as Vice Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. I anticipate that Janet and Amy and the rest of our architects team will be doing the substantive amount of speaking and answering questions tonight. I'm here for any procedural questions that are outside the bounds of the design process. And Chief Parenti, of course, is here as the expert on fire station operations as it pertains to the new building.
Okay, great. Welcome. Is the full team here? Are you missing anybody from your list that we need to bring in, or does it look like the full crew?
I'll defer to Jen and Amy to determine that.
I believe everyone's here, correct, Janet?
Yes, I believe we're all here. HKT, Janice Lamenta, Principal at HKT Architects, and Amy Dunlap, Principal. She'll be making the bulk of the presentation. We have Ray Dunnetts from RDLA, our landscape architect. And then we have Jim Jackson and Nicole Capistrone, Civil Engineers from ParCorp. And then, of course, the Chief is gonna do an introduction to the project to send us on our way. Thank you.
Well, welcome, everyone. Chief Parenti, do you want to kick it off then with your introduction and then move into the presentation?
I would love to. Just gonna share my screen. Give me a second.
Sure.
He says as he's looking around. So I wanted to do was give you a quick background into how we got here. You know, when we started, how the committees were formed, how we got where we are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt you. Before we get started, I just want to note, Millie, are you recusing yourself this evening from the? Okay, so as a, in a butter, or you received a butter, you're in the butters notification. So Millie Milton, for the purpose of the minutes, will be recusing herself. She will be able to comment, of course, as in a butter, but as a planning board member, Millie is recusing herself from the vote tonight. I'm sorry about that, Chief, if you want to continue.
Manager, thank you. In fact, you mentioned that. I remember sending a letter to Millie, so I should have thought about that earlier. So in 2012, the annual town meeting, there was a placeholder put in for a feasibility study for the fire station, or $75,000 put aside. What they called at the time was a limited feasibility. I went back and I found records even further back in 2007 and 2005 of previous attempts to move forward with that. In 2017, after I came here, we actually went ahead with this feasibility committee. We put it together, and Mitch was actually a member of that committee. And we did quite a bit, quite a significant study of looking at, should we stay where we are? Should we expand? Should we tear down and renovate? Should we, you know, what's available? We did a lot of, we sent out an RFI to anyone in the downtown Ketchment area to see if they had land available to us. And if you did, would you, you know, did it meet the parameters for the fire station? And we reviewed all those, and we ended up with a, the location of 6165 West Main Street. It was the best location for our downtown station. If we were to leave that area of downtown, it would require us to then reconstruct the second station due to delays in response because we would be more, more remote from some parts of our, of our response areas. So in 2019, the town approved Article 20, which appropriated 3,500,000 to purchase 6165 West Main and Monroe to hire an owner's project manager and for design fees. You recall, part of that money came from leftover fees from the Lincoln Street project. I believe right around $1 million were left over from Lincoln Street project I came across. We began negotiating with the owner to see what he was looking for for the property. At the same time, we began some approval from Historic District, which they gave us approval in 2020. Right around that same time, we found some contamination on the property, which we were told when we first looked at the property by Department of Environmental Protection that it was, it had been cleaned. Turns out it was clean for gasoline, but it wasn't clean for diesel product. And diesel, some diesel type product was found underneath the slab at the, of the old gas station. We developed the purchases and sales, and it started getting pushed back. 1216, 2020 got pushed back, 241 got pushed back, then 2021 it got pushed back three times. And all these were being pushed back because we were in negotiations with the owner as far as the cleanup. How much who was gonna pay for, what we were gonna pay for the land. At the time, the purchase and sales was drafted in such a way that the owner had to give us a clean site, meaning all the buildings had to be torn down. He could do it much cheaper than we could. And he had to remediate it to a level one as per defined, I think it was level one, as defined by DEP. So we had all these delays. Finally, in 2022, the purchase and sales was executed for the property for 6165 West Main Street. And that was almost, that was about 3.41 years after the town meeting approval. So it took us quite a while to get there. We got to 10 Monroe fairly quickly. Didn't take us a whole lot longer. And then the Fire Station Building Committee took a little bit to get up, but we had our first meeting in 2023 on 3/20. We hired our owner's project manager, Jared, who was Colliers. And then we went through our process for a architect. And we hired our architect, who is HKT, who's represented here today. And that was a little over four years after the town meeting approval. So the timeline after that was, we started our program development, which was discussion with Fire Department leadership, survey of department personnel, space needs, that type of thing. And then began our schematic design phase. That included Fire Station Building Committee meetings and joint meetings with design review and master plan implementation and public input meetings, and then individual meetings with design review. That led us to our next phase, once we hit the end of schematic design, which is design development, which is where we are now. But again, Fire Station Building Committee, Design Review Committees, EBA Committees, the meeting we're here for tonight. So why do we need, that's, that's how we got where we are. Why do we need what we, what we're asking for? The current station we're in was designed in 74 and occupied in 75. And it was designed when we had two full-time firefighters and our workday shifts. We didn't run the ambulance service. There were really no, it says limited sleeping facilities, meaning they threw a couple beds on the second floor. And the focus was really on the current space needs at that time, and it didn't look down the road. This letter here from Chief Pierce states, the physical site would be adequate, large enough to accommodate, you know, that we're currently in, is not large enough to accommodate our equipment. Which are proposing, it's not the best site, but it'll work going forward. Okay? At the time, they had seven pieces of apparatus. And they stated, Chief Pierce stated, we can't fit all these apparatus in our station, so they built a new one. Currently, we have 18 pieces of apparatus. We can't fit all these in our current station. Quite a few of them either out back or in the garage, or myself or the deputy are there. They're, our vehicles are outside. Part three is always outside. We just cannot fit them in the current station. Ones we do have in the station looks like this. And I think some of you have been down there and walked around and you've seen it's bumper to bumper. The only way to get from Bay, Bay 3 to Bay 4 is actually to crawl over top of bumpers or open a door. We have equipment that's stored, that should be stored in a, in a secure area, our diving equipment. And our dive equipment is stored in our back room with our water heater and our generators. You see, that's another look at the front of the. One of the other big reasons we're looking for a new station is many studies have occurred and they've determined that around 60% of firefighting, a lot of duty death are due to cancer. And yes, we know as firefighters that when we take the job, we're exposed to all kinds of nasty stuff. And we understand that. We understand when we're on the scene, we're exposed to nasty stuff. And we follow a lot of the things that they, that they indicate here that we can do. We make sure we're always wearing self-redean apparatus. We have stuff on scene to clean ourselves off with, and we wash our gear. We have two sets of gear actually for each. We have a gear washer and a gear dryer, and then we maintain records of every time someone's exposed. What we can't do necessarily is what number three is, which is now we have to keep our contaminated gear isolated. And we don't want that by where the guys are. We don't want it near the engines and the exhaust. We don't have that ability right now with our station. And this is why it's really scary. So firefighters have a higher risk to develop testicular cancer, multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And we're talking about like over 100% greater chance of something. These are really scary cancers, and I unfortunately have lost friends with work-related cancer. And we have actually had people in Northborough Fire who have developed work-related. This is a really big concern for us. What can we do? Or we can develop what's called a healthy station or a safe or a clean station. And these are different steps you can, you can do, you know, you're reading, you learn about, you know, what causes cancer in fire stations. And that's the off-gassing of the turnout here. That's the, the way the fire trucks start up and all the exhaust fills up the fire station. They're basically in a garage somewhere. It's maybe not having good decontamination pages for people and are not having areas to decontaminate. Not having good, healthy green elements and not having a station that's designed with a hot, warm, and a cold zone. So this is what a hot, warm, and a cold zone looks like. And this is actually the breakdown of our current, of our proposed station. Hot zone is the apparatus area and the areas as we're looking at it to the left. That's the area where all the contaminates are. The warm zone is kind of a transfers area. That's where we, after our gear, that's where our gear is stored when we're not using it. That's where our decon area is, where our training tower and our reports room are. This is where the, these are, the firefighters are going back and forth from the dirty room to the, the hot zone to the warm zone. And then the cold zone is the administration area, all the living quarters. Those are all the, all the cold zones. These are not only separated by actual construction features, but they're also separated by airflow and by the way the station is designed and the way that the, the system is designed to move the air around and to keep pressurized areas. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that have been out there. Some people are concerned, well, what happened to the plans in 2019? And how come you made it double? Well, we did make it double what it was in 2019. 2019, it was 26,420 square feet. Right now, we're at 30,850 square feet. Several things led to that. One of the big ones was we had to add an elevator. It was not an elevator in the original one. We're required to have an elevator. We're a municipal building. We have to meet ADA. We had to increase the apparatus bay size because it wasn't done correctly for the size of apparatus we had. We did not have a, the design was done with a, the measurements off of our GIS system, not with a true survey. That made a huge difference when we did a true survey. One of the other things we did, and I'm gonna credit HKT with this, is we didn't design for what we need now. We looked 40 years in the future because the idea is, when we build this station, we don't want to go back and have to build it, add on to it in five, 10, 15, 20 years. Because every time we do that, especially with the escalation cost, it keeps going up. The prices keep going up. What we've run into from 2019 till now is a new stretch code, the need for additional parking lots, a need for a retaining wall because of the new design, because of the bigger apparatus floor. So we've run into all these different things, and that's caused some, some issues and some, some additions. So that's where we are now. Where we're going forward to is we need to go through with Planning Board. We meet with the, we have to finish up our design development, get a price on that. And every time we move forward with a different section of the design, the price gets refined, and it gets tighter and tighter and tighter. Going schematic, and I'm sure that Amy will go off, we'll talk about this, but going schematic design, we're very broad. And the cost estimators have to kind of guess at some of the things. So we haven't made decisions yet, and they haven't made decisions. As we go into design development, which is where we are now, we can get much clearer, much tighter. And we're hoping to get those numbers closer and to keep working and getting that. We've developed the site, nb-firestation.org, which has all of our frequently asked questions, our progress update, every meeting we've done, every presentation we've had. There's a lot of great information here. So we really recommend people take, take, take a few minutes, they go here, see what we have there. And that's the best source for information right now. And that is my presentation.
Great.
A little background.
Thanks for walking through that. That was great. Is it Amy? Are you presenting the site plan itself?
Actually, Jim Jackson from PAR will be presenting the site plan. I'll present the architecture when we get to that.
Yeah, good evening. My name is, my name is Jim Jackson. I'm with ParCorp, Managing Engineer. We're doing the civil engineering site design on the project. Also have Nicole Capistrone, Project Engineer with PAR. It's available too. But I'm gonna go through the, the civil plans now. Straight here. Does that come up?
It does, yeah.
Okay. Start with the overall plan. So this, this is the site at 64, 65 West Main Street. And to the east of it is the bank property. To the west is the plaza with the Hillside Grill. And then to the north, there's Dunkin' Donuts. This kind of gives an overall plan of the site. So this is the demolition and sediment and erosion control plan. So as the Chief said, the, the gas station and the residents on the property were, were removed prior to the town purchasing the land. So those are gone. So we just have some minor site demolition, some removing some pavement and things like that, some tall walls and things. We also show the erosion controls on this plan. We're gonna compost filter sock on the downhill edge of the property to contain any sediments on the site. And then we also put inlet protection on any of the existing catch bases in West Main Street. Collect any sediment that gets by the compost filter sock. We'll have a construction entrance, a stone entrance to collect soil and sediments off of the truck wheels as they, as they exit the site. Show some stockpile areas. Washout area. This is just to keep everything on the site, so we're not, no sediments are leaving the site. This is, shows the general plan. So here's the 30,000 square foot building. The portion on the east is the apparatus bays. So we show a large apron for the apparatus to easily maneuver onto West Main Street. And then on the west side of the site will be the administration portion of the building, living area. That kind of thing will be on the side of the site. And the site will be limited on the east, we'll just limit it to authorized vehicles. Fire apparatus will be able to exit the apparatus bay in the front. They'll also be able to return and drive through the, through a back door into the bay and be set up for, to respond to the next call. All, most of the vehicles will be able to do this drive-through except the, the large ladder trucks, which will have to back into the bay. And the slab out in front. The parking for the firefighters will be on this east side of the site. We're calling for 23 employee spaces, so we have 16 on the east side. And then we have more on the west side that will be used by the staff. And we're also showing 30 spaces on the west side. These will be for visitors and also for the public. So there'll be some public parking for people just accessing downtown. They'll be able to park here and then side. Walk to the various downtown areas. Show three ADA parking spaces. We're showing, in the public side, we're showing four EV charging stations. And one of those will be ADA accessible. And then on the firefighter side, we're also showing two more EV charging stations with infrastructure, duct bank, and things to add a couple more EV spaces. We're showing snow storage on the, on the property. And one of the big things on the site, it is into the hillside, so we are gonna have to excavate out to bench the site off. And we're showing a retaining wall that runs down the west side of the property between the hillside grill and then along the back of the property, and then tapers off inside the bank. The back side is gonna be up to 30 feet tall at the highest area. So what we're doing there is we're, we're gonna use a batter wall instead of a straight up vertical wall that we're kind of imposing. We're doing a batter wall, so each block steps back. So it steps back nine inches every foot. Rises, it steps back nine inches, one foot rise. So, so it's a more of a sloped wall. It's less, less imposing. We do have, we're also showing a dumpster enclosure on the back of the building, the area. And we are also showing sidewalks. We do have them set back from, from the edge of the road, about six, nine feet in this area. And, and we also are tying that sidewalk. The way we're showing it now, it's tying into the sidewalk at the Hillside Grill. And that's open to some discussion. We have gotten some comments on that. So how, how we do that there, we want to discuss a little more later tonight. Did go through the zoning table. And we have gotten some zoning variances. One is for the, the setback from the front. The maximum allowed is 20 feet. We're gonna actually be 39 feet back to give us some room for the apparatus to be out on the slab in front of the, the apparatus bay, so they're not approaching right into the street. And we have received approval for that. General plan that. Move to the drainage plan. So we did do a full stormwater analysis, and we submitted a stormwater report. I'll walk through the plan and show how we're accommodating the stormwater on the site. So we did try to infiltrate as to the maximum that the site would allow. We do have some issues with groundwater, but we were able to provide three infiltration, underground infiltration systems. One over here, one here, and then another one here on the property line with the bank. And then also to reduce the, the rate of flows leaving the site, we added some underground detention chambers where we weren't, we couldn't make the infiltration work in those areas, but we did go with the underground detention chambers. And we have about six of those locations. Out along West Main Street. Big one under this parking area. One under the employee parking. Have one up the hill above the retaining wall. Then we have two on this site here. And those, those will help detain the flows leaving the site. So we'll be able to maintain the peak flows leaving the site under various storm events to below what the existing conditions are. So we don't put any strain on the, on the off-site properties with stormwater. And then to treat the stormwater, we do have the infiltration, but we also are showing aqua swirl units before they go into the detention and the, and the infiltration systems. What those will do is a swirl system that will remove the total suspended solids. And we bring them to, we exceed 90% removal at the ESS. And then we've also included aqua filter units. And what these will do is remove the phosphorus. And we've got, we're able to remove the phosphorus to over 80% phosphorus leaving the site. Much covers the stormwater system in general. And we do have a full report, stormwater report that shows the results. For site utilities, for water, we're gonna loop the water through the site on the back and then back out to West Main Street. And we have two hydrants on the site, one here and one here. And then we have our water service, fire service here and domestic service here. Sewer will be leaving from two areas. There was sewer coming out of the apparatus bay and then one coming out of the administrative side. And then they'll combine in front of the site and then tie it to the municipal sewer system. We're also showing electrical will be underground. It'll come off the pole at West Main Street, the underground to transformer here, and then into the building. And then we also have a generator on the, in the building. We're also showing a gas service constructed by the gas company. Right out front here. This, for the civil plans, that's pretty much covers it. That's the plans, and then we do have, I think we have about 10 detail sheets showing some of the site details, the filtration systems and things like that. I can go through those if I ask a question. Just gonna get a higher level right here. Amy, do you want to take over with the architectural?
Sure.
You want me to call them up or?
Yeah, if you don't mind. If you've got them right there, that would be fine.
Yep.
Okay. So this is.
Okay, so this is the first floor plan of the fire station and the chief gave you a little bit of an introduction into the way it's laid out. Jim, I don't know if you can point to sort of the entry where the for the public is over. Right there is the main entrance for the public, which goes into a vestibule and into the lobby. And that is the public zone of the building. Off of that, there's access into the training room and EOC room and some public toilets. Beyond there, it's locked down. And so you would have to be let in by the fire station staff. There is a window right there to speak to the administrator if you need help from the fire station. The rest of this floor on the, excuse me, the right hand side there are all the administrative offices for the fire department. And then from there, moving towards the left, you get into what the chief was describing as sort of the warm zone. That's a lot of the sports spaces for the fire department, places like the gear storage, the decontamination showers and various storage rooms and work rooms along that zone. And then there's the apparatus bays. There are six bays. As you can see, we've got a layout of the trucks shown here, five of the bays. The vehicles would be parked three vehicles deep. And then there's the one bay that has two vehicles deep. That's where the ladder truck is is parked. Most of the trucks here on the are, the bays aren't really drive through. They're talked about as drive through a lot, but the reality is the six vehicles that are facing directly out into Main Street tend to be the first responders. They go out first and they go out the front of the station. When they return to the station, the building's been set back so that they can back back into the station without having to stop traffic on Main Street. They can do that maneuver right on the apron. And that's one of the reasons that we set the building back and requested a variance to the setback so that they could do that. And that allows them to not stop the traffic, keep the traffic flowing on Main Street, and it also makes it a safer situation for the firefighters. They don't have to get out of the trucks to stop traffic in order to do that. Going out the back doors, those are sort of the vehicles that don't go out quite as often, but they still need access to be able to get out quickly and not have to have another vehicle move in order for them to to get out. So they can go out the back of the station and around to do that. And then over on the right hand side, we have a number of building support spaces and apparatus spaces on the first floor there with a mezzanine space up above. Jim, if you want to go to the next plan? This is the second floor plan. Here it's mostly living quarters for the fire department on the front right hand side there, all the bunk rooms and lockers for the firefighters when they're in the station. There's a day room and kitchen, which is there where they cook, where they eat, where they can have a little rest time in between their shifts. That's in the back right hand corner. And there is a roof deck off of that where they can go out and have their meals outside where they could, there'll be a grill set up there so that they can barbecue out there. There's a fitness space just to the left of that. And then some mechanical spaces. In the front of the building, sort of in the midpoint between the apparatus base and the administration, you see a stair there. That is actually, yep, right there. Thanks. That is a hose drying and training tower for the the fire department. So when we look at the elevations, you'll see that's a taller element on the elevations and that's because the height is determined by the length of hose that they need to hang in there to let it dry. But they'll also be using it. Excuse me, for practicing and and training for different exercises. The next drawing, Jim? This is just a roof plan. Excuse me, you could see that the roof is a combination of pitched and flat roof where you see the closely spaced lines together. Those are actually sloped roofs and that's indicative of standing seam metal roofing product. That's what all the little lines are. Over the apparatus bays there, those are roof monitors. So that's a single slope roof there. And where the the roof is at its high point, there's a vertical glass clear story window element which allows natural light to get deep into the apparatus space. The rest of the sloped roofs you'll see from the elevations are more traditional sloped roofs. And then we have some flat roofs around where we can have some mechanical units. And those are sort of screened by the the sloped roof elements. Next drawing. And here we've got some elevations. You can get a sense of what the building looks like here. You can see that hose and training tower that I was talking about. We're proposing having a clock on that tower. The elevations, you can see it's all masonry. We have two different masonry products that we're proposing putting on the building. We presented some options to the committee and they've selected two different brick colors that we'll be using. There's a darker sort of brown brick color that's going to be that base material and then some the banding that goes around the building. We've got these horizontal bands that tie the different elements together. And then some arches which highlight the main entrance, public entrance into the building as well as arches over the apparatus space to highlight those there. And we repeat that arch element on the excuse me, on the tower to try to tie those various pieces together. The, we can go to the next slide. In the upper drawing here is the south elevation. So that's what you would see from the back parking lot area. And we've simplified that elevation a little bit. We're not showing the arches back there because it really is only going to be seen from the back parking area. And so that was a cost saving element that the committee chose. And then the bottom elevation there, that's the east elevation and that is an elevation of those storage and mechanical spaces with the mezzanine space up above. So there aren't a lot of windows there because the spaces behind it don't really allow for a lot of windows into the storage and mechanical spaces. Jim, the next drawing? These are just some three dimensional views looking from different angles. So the two drawings at the top show your view from Main Street, both heading into the downtown area and then heading away from the downtown area. You can get a sense of what the building will look like in the landscape. And then the two bottom 3D views are from the parking lot areas. So you can get a sense of the where the pitched roofs are, where the flat roofs are, and then where those roof decks are that we talked about. The next drawing, Jim? This was a sign that we were proposing for out at the street. We actually, it was going to be an electronic sign. We had to go for a variance to the zoning board and they did not grant the variance for the electronic portion of the sign. So we're going to have to redesign this a little bit. The plan is still to bring power out to that location so that if zoning changes in the future, the town could in the future put some sort of electronic sign up there, but we won't be doing an electronic sign with this project. Next drawing, Jim? I think that might be it for the.
Yeah, I think that's it for the architecture. We do have the landscape plan.
And by the way, before you go to the next one, you have, I think Mark is in the audience. Do you want him in with? Is he part of your team too or?
He is part of our team, but he was just going to listen in today. Thank you.
Sure. Alrighty. Go right ahead. If you want to share the landscaping.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I'm Ray Dunnis with RDLA. This, this project. We, we tried to get as many trees on the site as we could without blocking important emergency views from the apparatus bay to West Main Street. So many of the plants towards the apparatus bay are smaller. We do have a street tree presence along the entrance walk into into the into the front door. Yep, right there. And as you can see, we we tried to get trees in every possible location we could. The front, the front servicing area will all be mown grass lawn. We do have a memorial and a flagpole located at the center entrance. I don't know if you can zoom in a little bit. Yep, right to, yep, right in that little corner there. We've got six bike racks and a couple of benches on a concrete pad and native native shrubs and perennials all along all along that entrance to add a little bit of color, but also be drought, drought tolerant and sustainable for the long run. Sliding down a little bit, Jim. We have some drainage areas where we have some native plantings that can handle you know, dry feet, wet feet in case we get inundated with with a big storm. And then up along the, on top of the retaining wall along the woodland edge, we've supplemented the planting to provide a buffer from the neighbors on the hillside grill side and also to the south, those residential neighbors in that direction. The retaining wall will be fenced to prevent, you know, because there's a big fall height there. We have an image of, we have some images of some of those site furnishings on this drawing. If you zoom out a little bit, Jim. With that, that we're proposing like a black steel picket fence. The bench would be a metal bench up in that upper right hand corner, the bike racks. The entrance from the visitor parking lot to the front door will have bollards, bollard lighting. We tried to select a bollard that that fit design wise with with the building and in the same language so that bollard light will do that. And then of course our flagpole detail. The plant list, if you want to review it at some point, is all native, native plants to Massachusetts. Once again, provide some benefit for pollinators and and are also drought resistant and you know, will be very sustainable in the long run. That concludes my landscape piece. Know who's next?
We did also have photometric plan showing the lighting. We don't have the electrical engineer here for this. Basically, we're showing that, you know, the site, the developed portion of the site is adequately lit, but there's no light traveling off.
Oh, it's hard to hear you. I think you're fading out a little bit there.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, just showing the photometric plan. We don't have the electrical engineer here with us tonight, but we do have, we do have a plan showing that the lighting is, you know, it's adequate for the developed portion of the site, but not, no light will be leaving.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and we did have a couple of things. We did receive some comments from Lori Connors. And then also from Fred Litchfield, the town engineer. And we did have a couple of questions. We wanted to discuss with you about some of the, just really two of the comments. One, we were showing there's an existing crosswalk in West Main Road. And we were calling for removing it. And then Lori pointed out that, you know, we should relocate it somewhere. So we kind of looked at it a little further and and we're the decision that it can it can remain in place if you'd like to keep it. It won't, it won't be impacted by the fire station. We just didn't feel it was providing too much. But as far as getting across the street, it's probably as good a location as any to access the other side.
Lori, you had recommended we don't move it. And then I think Fred recommended we just move it rather than get rid of it, move it. Did you? Were those conflicting comments or at all?
Well, Fred and I discussed it and he thought that the reason why they may have wanted to remove it was having something to do with the fire station. Maybe it was in a bad location. So he, in my understanding is that he would be fine with it moving elsewhere. I feel strongly for in the position of trying to promote pedestrian friendly environment downtown that the crosswalk is necessary. And also I do suspect that there may be quite a few trips across the street from the fire station to Dunkin Donuts. So I thought that having a crosswalk along this stretch would facilitate that motion. So I'm fine with leaving it as is. I, my comment was that I still wanted it to match all of the other crosswalks downtown. So it should be, I believe it's a stamped asphalt crosswalk throughout the downtown. So I'd still want it to be the same color and the same design as all the other crosswalks.
Okay, and Fred was an additional crosswalk at the westerly end of the property. So you're you're saying, Lori, your recommendation is keep that one and add it? Well, I guess Fred's recommendation was add a second one. But is that, what's your thought on that?
I'd always like to have more crosswalks than fewer crosswalks. So if Fred thinks that another crosswalk is necessary, then I'd be fine with that. I just definitely want at least one crosswalk along this stretch.
Jim, does that answer your question or?
Yeah, pretty much. So so we would agree with just leave that crosswalk, the existing crosswalk in place because it's it's not impacted by the fire, fire station. So that, you know, still remain useful. I'm not sure about adding the other one, but we can discuss that with Fred some if if he really thinks we should have both or if just that leaving that one.
I just have a quick question on that.
Sure, go right ahead.
I was just wondering, well, Fred's not here, but would adding a new crosswalk is walk is part of this design? It's just expensive as it is, you know, you hate to throw the things in. Is adding a crosswalk something the DPW can do? Is that just striping and like, so it's not part of this project, but something that's flagged that we can do as a town? Or do you have to hire someone to put in a crosswalk?
So the rest of the crosswalks are stamped asphalt crosswalks. So the DPW wouldn't be able to do that on their own. So they could certainly stripe, but then it's not going to match the other crosswalks downtown. So in my opinion, it would look out of place.
I just, I know a couple of times we've been asked not to add things that are above and beyond the scope. And it seems like if it was down the street, I know I definitely would love to get more crosswalks and have it more pedestrian friendly, but if it's above and beyond the scope, you know, I wouldn't want to add to the project.
Well, public safety is is our purview. So it's not above and beyond the scope from my perspective, but I understand what you're saying about costs and whatnot.
Well, it's not across, it's not part of this parcel. It's like across my video, right on the top right? Is that where the extra sidewalk would be?
Which one's existing and which one? Sorry, could you show us the?
Yeah, so there's existing right here near the bank.
Okay.
And I think what they did then is the sidewalk ended there. So it was a logical place to let people cross the street and continue down the sidewalk towards like the Dunkin Donuts area.
Okay, and then, and then I see that's, I was looking at the wrong, gotcha.
Well, no, you might be looking at the right one. Where's the new one suggested?
There wasn't a new one suggested. Except I guess Fred is asking that maybe we add one because I think we were, I'm not sure if his comment was because we were removing the one to add one. Or?
We had two. So did you get a chance to see Fred's review memo?
Yeah, we got it late this afternoon.
Yeah, we did too. So it's okay. We're in the same boat. That's no problem. But he had recommended a crosswalk reinstalled near the intersection of Monroe Street and an additional crosswalk installed at the westerly end of the property. Both similar to existing imprinted crosswalks.
So this would be near Monroe Street, I think, just keep the existing. Sounds like he's looking at something.
Something down that way. Yep, okay. Okay, and you said you had a second question?
Yeah, so the other thing we, and we've discussed this quite a bit. The sidewalk at Hillside Grill. It's really not like a street sidewalk. It's more of an access from their parking into their to their businesses. And yeah, we've been asked to kind of connect to that. And right now we are showing it connecting to that, but we do kind of pull away from the street with that. So we just kind of wanted to get your input on what's the best thing to do. You know, one option would be just to continue the sidewalk. Right now we're like nine feet off the edge of the curb and just continue like that. And then it would kind of dead end at the hillside grill property. And then at future projects, either, you know, the state or the town wanted to continue the sidewalks down West Main Street, they could, you know, pick up there. And then at future projects, either, you know, the state or the town wanted to continue the sidewalks down West Main Street, they could, you know, pick up there. Or we can keep it the way we're showing it where we tie in to that. Um, it's kind of a high level sidewalk. It's more up by the. Business. Along the roadway.
So Lori, I think the sidewalk was one of your comments. Is that, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, um, so right now, of course, there is a sidewalk that exists directly abutting Route 20. So um they, what they're proposing to do is remove the sidewalk from its current location. And then put a grass strip in between the Route 20 and the sidewalk. So that is in compliance with our design standards and our design guidelines, so I can understand why they did that. Um, so on the abutting property on uh Hillside, there is a sidewalk. Um, it doesn't exist. Directly abutting Route 20, so it's not that directly abutting the curb. It's up the hill in front of the restaurant, so it's not really a usable sidewalk at this point. Um, because it doesn't connect, so you would have to walk through the grass. In order to connect from the existing sidewalk on Route 20 to the sidewalk on Hillside. So I'm offering two suggestions. So if if the the board uh prefers to uh comply with the design standards. And have the five foot grass strip. My suggestion is that this sidewalk. Meet the existing sidewalk up on the hill um and have it go up to uh the Hillside Grill. If the planning board would prefer to have the sidewalk in its current location directly abutting um. Route 20, then my suggestion is that the town pay to extend the sidewalk to the driveway of the Hillside Grill. Instead of just having a dead end at the property line like it currently does.
Board thoughts on that? Amy, you have something?
Um, this was something that was discussed a lot at design review guideline, I mean, design review. Because the design guidelines do say to put a five foot strip. But the rest of the downtown, the sidewalk is on the road. So our um memo isn't done because we have one more meeting with design review. But one of the um conditions we're talking about was just asking for a waiver. That the sidewalk actually connects to the sidewalk at a video and it follows. The rest of the sidewalks downtown, like this would be the only sidewalk in the downtown that has a five foot strip of grass. Which is great because we definitely want that in the future to be walkability, but it kind of. As part of the design review, we wanted it even like um Lisa brought up, it'd be better for like the snowplows if they just go straight. And although I think it was great when they wrote it back in the design review guidelines. It almost makes sense for this project just to keep in line with the other sidewalk that comes from Monroe Street.
Okay, so don't do the grass part was the designer reviews recommendation?
That's what we thought because it no nobody else downtown has done it.
Okay.
And but I do, I do thank them for following the guidelines and putting it in their original drawing.
Uh, I don't know. I don't have a strong preference. Bill, anything for me on that one?
I'm a little concerned. How steep is that hill going up to Hillside? So I mean, uh yeah, on a rainy day or on a, you know, snowy day, that's a pretty steep climb for that sidewalk to go up to that building.
Yeah, so we were able to make it work uh. From here to the tie in at a five percent slope, which is considered ADA accessible. Uh, you know, if we keep it under five percent, so without, you know, putting in handrails and that kind of thing. So it's 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 a hey, you know, it does climb up to the Hillside Grill area, but it's, we were able to make it work within ADA. Guideline, you know, like.
And then what is it coming? Do we know what it is coming back down?
Yeah, so it'll be five, you know, five percent each.
No, but I mean, on the other side of Hillside's driveway.
Oh, I I think it's.
Because you're going up by the building, right? You're going up by the building. So now if somebody gets up there. Right with a wheelchair, how are they going to get back down the other side? They're gonna have to come down the driveway.
Yeah, it ends. I think it ends at the driveway. I think that's the end of it.
I think just leaving it at street level probably makes more sense, but I definitely agree with Amy that, you know, they don't need the gra- the grass barrier isn't anywhere else downtown, so. But I would want to keep it down at the street level almost and keep it level. Right, just for clearing, either for clearing snow. Or, you know, just because if we do decide that we want to continue that sidewalk. Right, where are we going to continue it afterwards?
Yeah, so we could do that. What we would do is just extend it, you know, along street level and then to the property line and it would, you know, just kind of dead end there. And then a future projects, if, you know, Hillside Grill. Property owners were, you know, doing some work on the property, they may. Be required to to continue the sidewalk in front of their property, or you could have like a state or a town project. Because it is in the right of ways.
Right.
I I would suggest. Um, if the decision is to keep the sidewalk. My suggestion is to for the the town as part of the fire station project. To extend the sidewalk to the driveway. Because otherwise where we have the same condition that we have now. Which is a sidewalk that's broken in several places that just dens dead ends at the property line and and doesn't connect to anything. So.
Okay.
I would recommend that the town finance the extension of the sidewalk as part of the fire station project.
Yeah, I would think that would make sense. I mean, it's not part of their project, but it is something that's needed in town to do it the right way.
Um, could I make a suggestion? Um, if there's talk about adding another crosswalk across Main Street. Uh instead of carrying that sidewalk down, would it make sense to cross over on that? In the hillside area, cross across the street there, put the crosswalk there. To connect to to the other sidewalks.
Carrie, if I might.
Of course, please.
Um, so actually, that's something that I was going to bring up. Um, as somebody who frequents that Dunkin Donuts that's there. Um, one of the things I see all, I've seen quite a few um accidents. There where somebody will be trying to make a left hand turn into Dunkin Donuts and back up traffic. To the point that people coming around that corner can't see. Uh, the, you know, that the vehicles are stopped and they're doing forty miles an hour. So I'd be concerned with putting a crosswalk anywhere near that curve right there. Um, I'm also a little, I I wanted to ask about. Um. Number one, non emergency vehicles. Um, I understand emergency vehicles have to come out and you're going to have a light there, right? But when you have a non emergency vehicle coming out. Does it make sense for us to require them to make a right hand turn instead of trying to make a left out of there on a blind curve?
You're talking this entrance here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's more a public entrance, so, you know, we could, you know, there's going to be no emergency vehicle, so we could. It could be done. I mean, we could have our traffic engineers look at it if it's something that we would.
And you said, you said earlier that was going to be a municipal parking lot, right? So it's not just going to be for the fire station. It's going to be for anybody. So I would be really concerned people taking a left hand turn. That's literal. That is like the worst spot on that corner. That you could possibly have and and and, you know, even making a right hand turn. There are a lot of people that are going to be flooring it coming out of that building onto Route 20. You know, I don't know if making. If that's a public area, I'm assuming that people can't pull around the other side to exit. You know, pull around the back of the building and then.
There's going to be a gate right here.
Yeah, see, so. So that's that's my, one of my concerns. Um. And then, yes, right hand only. Also, um, the eastbound traffic, so have you spoken with the state yet about where you're going to be? Potentially placing the uh lights to allow the emergency vehicles to come out and stop traffic?
Um, we have a concept design now, but we haven't started that discussion. You know, there is, you know, it's a big extensive approval process.
Yeah, no, I know I. Um, so I would also be concerned that you need something prior to that corner. Letting people know who may not come down Route 20 all the time that there is a fire station there and there's a potential of a stoplight. Right, so some type of warning. I know I've seen them. Um, I I see one all the time. There's one on Route 9. Um, when you come off of four ninety-five, if you're heading eastbound, and there's one that says, you know, red light. Ahead, right? And the red comes up when the red light is on. Right, something along that's that line, just to let people know who are coming around that corner that there's a potential there that they may have to stop.
Yeah, and that, you know, we. There will be extensive review, so I, you know, something like that may come out in the review where they'll require that.
I have a couple of other things, but that's all I had for that, that particular item. Thank you.
Okay, um, did you want to hold your questions, Bill? Or do you want to just go through them all?
I'll hold it. Uh, i- if anyone else has anything along that line, I'll let them continue. Otherwise, I'll continue.
Any others? Well, what I was, I wanted, um, are any of your questions related to the comments from Lori or? Um, Fred or?
No.
Okay, so would you like to just continue? I think if you have some question?
Um, so the um. Uh, let's see, the sidewalk one you answered, the um EV sites that you have there, those are going to be uh set up. They're not just running electrical to those sites. But the intention is to actually set up EV charging stations?
Yeah, so the way we have it set up is is. Yeah, so there's in the public side, there's going to be uh two chargers which have two charges, you know, four, there'll be four EV stations. That will be constructed. Yeah, those will be in place. One of them will be ADA accessible. And then on the uh private, you do, fire department side, there will be two um. EV charging stations in place, and then they'll be set up for two more with the conduit and things if if, you know, if this is the command form.
Okay. Ah, perfect, thank you. Um.
So I mentioned. I'm sorry, could I just interrupt for a second? Just there are three more um public across the parking lot that are going to be set up as as EV ready. The building code requires us to do twenty percent of the parking spaces as EV ready and the town has elected to actually put the chargers in some of them now, just to clarify.
Okay.
Right there.
Great, thank you. Um. And then the um. The generator that you have there, um, what's the fuel on the generator?
That it's diesel.
It's diesel. So where's the diesel storage going to be?
Uh, it's usually right under the generator.
Okay, and it, I'm assuming, well, okay, so that'll be there the entire time.
Um, yeah.
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Um, Amy, question, do you have questions or?
Um, yeah, I was just going through Fred's letter because I. You know, did come in late tonight, so I was.
Yeah, so then along the lines of the letters, um Lori, you had some recommendations. Did everyone on the fire station team get a chance to? I didn't see any response to the comments and sometimes we get a follow up with responses. Did you get responses, Lori, or no? It's still your original letter?
No, no responses as of yet.
Okay, so do you um for the fire station team, is that something you're still working through um Lori's comments and you'll provide responses or you? Uh, just want to make sure I have a plan for that. So or did any board members have comments on Lori's comments?
Right, I was just looking at friends.
Okay, so first I guess for Lori's, um, will you be providing responses to Lori's comments? Maybe for the next meeting?
Yes, the design team will will provide responses and revised plans with. It's warranted.
Okay, great. Um, and then there was one that I want to point out. Oh, sorry, that's on Fred's, the um, the waivers. So Lori, anything you want to note about your comments or? Um, and then I'll ask planning board members if they have any questions on Lori's comments. Anything you want to point out specifically that um you want to highlight?
No, I, they've done a really good job of addressing uh my comments through design review. So I only had a couple of minor things outstanding. The most significant one was the um sidewalk connection and the crosswalk. Uh, which I understand uh will be addressed, so I um. I'm looking forward to seeing how they will address them. I'm not quite sure. Uh, what the consensus is at this point, so. Uh, I wait to see.
Okay, Amy, anything from you or Bill for that matter? Sorry, anything from you on um Lori's letter?
Um, I'm just reading through it.
I don't have anything.
I think for me, the big item that I sort of have my eye on is the retaining wall. So Lori, you had recommended um submitting a retaining wall design for board review. Um, which is fine, but is there like, who reviews the retaining wall? It makes me nervous. It's so high and there are houses back there and. Is that something that Fred looks at ultimately, even if it comes to us as a condition of approval? I just would want to make sure somebody is going to actually review that beyond the board.
So um, of course, this is the first project with a retaining wall. Like this uh that has gone through since I've been here. So in my past experience, uh when there was a retaining wall design, it was this significance. Of course, it was designed by a structural engineer. Um, and then I would have my consulting engineer review it. Um, and the specific uh technical expert would be a um structural engineer. Um, so right now they haven't designed the retaining wall yet. So that is why I'm suggesting that it be a condition of approval. I'm not quite sure whether, you guys can probably speak more to it than I. Whether Fred feels comfortable reviewing uh structural retaining wall designs. Um, uh Bob's got his hand raised, so he probably has an answer to that question.
Bob, you have something there about the retaining wall?
Yes, thank you. Um, the retaining wall is actually under the building code. Um, where any built, any retaining wall over ten feet needs to be uh structurally designed by a structural engineer. Um, this particular wall, I would feel most comfortable passing it by. Uh, to either uh Fred Litchfield or Scott, you know, somebody with a PE who can put in a second set of eyes on it. Uh, almost as a reference that I can use, uh also working in conjunction with the designers. And the, and the engineering team for the project. Uh, I feel comfortable doing that, um, but it is under the building code.
Got it. So Bob, to clarify, a structural, a structural engineer would design it no matter what. You're just saying you for it to have extra eyes would be Scott or Fred or?
That's correct. I mean, it's it's it, the building code states that anything over ten feet has to be designed by a professional engineer. Uh, which is, which is a given. Um, this particular wall, you know, considering this for the fire station, it's for the town and it's also. You know, fairly complex at large compared to some of the other ones I've done. I would feel a lot more comfortable and at ease if there was another engineer that can take a look at it, just as a second set of eyes.
Okay, that's great. Um, Amy, did you have other items from that or you jumped to Fred's if not?
Yeah, no, the wall is a concern to me too and um. We talked about it a little today in design review and um right now there's a forty-two inch high fence at the top. And um. I had recommended that it at least be five feet. Um, you know, pool fences are four feet and I went up to North River Crossing and they have a huge wall. And when I went up there, it was taller than me. I feel that um forty-two inches is probably too short, just because it is thirty feet high. And I also wanted to ask about the number four, there's a discussion about a traffic impact assessment. Will there be a traffic in, I'm assuming because um the engineer was just talking about it, there'll be a traffic impact type of assessment done when they do the lights? For the fire station? Just to make sure it's going to flow?
Yes, we we do traffic counts to design the light and get, you know, get the warrant for the light with Mass DOT. What we're saying is we're not doing like a traffic assessment, how much traffic we're going to be generating from the project because. Fire department really doesn't generate. A lot of traffic like a shopping mall or. Big residential complex.
Okay. So there are a couple of other things probably coming from the design review, but we didn't finish yet. We're going to be looking at the landscaping, although what he presented tonight sounds. Sounds like it's definitely in the right direction. And I'm sure it's fine. We just didn't get the three eighteen drawing. We met on um January twenty-fifth and then February twenty-ninth. So, um. So, um, we were going to have our landscape person just to, just review it quickly. Um, let's see, there was a question about turnaround in that parking lot for the public. If this parking lot is full, I'm sure, did you have an engineer look at it that there's room enough to turn around? Like, say you're one of those cars at the very end of the parking lot, and this whole parking lot is full and the gate is closed. Is there enough turning radius for everybody to be able to maneuver?
Yeah, so we put the gate in the middle of this access road, so if a car does pull in, you know, they find no spaces available. They can pull in here and then back into this striped area and turn around.
Oh, so those striped areas, even that other one, that striped area can be used for turning around in that area?
Yeah, it's just striped pavement. It's not, you know, it's not raised.
Okay, that helps. That makes sense. Okay, and then there were some things where there were some waivers asked for. Uh, how hard is it to do the one by one hundred feet? I know they're asking not to do it, but I know it's something. Even like in the design review, it shows where the setbacks of like where your butters are, and it shows, just gives you a feel for what the neighbors are, it shows the whole site, and I know right here there's a waiver not to do it. Is that something that's difficult to do or?
Yeah, so Fred did.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
So Fred did comment on that also, and, you know, since it's been commented on, I think, I think that's something we can provide in our next set of drawings. And, and not ask for the waiver.
Okay, and I, you went through the, um, the tanks, but I may have missed it. Are there any floor drains or tight tanks underneath the building?
Um, well, since we do have, um, sewer, municipal sewer, we will have, um, floor drains in the apparatus bay, but they don't have to go to a tight tank. They will go to a oil separator and then directly to the sewer. You know, when we have septic systems, we do have to put the tight tanks on the floor drains.
Okay. Okay, and, um, if we do move the sidewalk forward or leave it where it is, I notice it says, um, to patch up the sidewalk that's there now. I think that was one of Fred's. But if it's all choppy, will that sidewalk just be replaced, you know? Or is that something that they just patch up their extra, um, openings?
Quite sure the question, like, the existing sidewalk?
Yeah, like the exist, the existing driveway openings which are not being utilized shall be removed and replaced with the concrete sidewalk. But, you know, if it doesn't, I guess it's something on the, um, fly when you're out there. If it's, if it's kind of a crummy sidewalk right there, do they replace the whole, the whole thing?
You know, property line, property line, the sidewalk running.
Yeah, um, Amy got disconnected, but, um, I would definitely replace the whole site. It's going to be under construction, and we're not going to try to save five feet of a sidewalk, Amy, uh, we'll, we'll replace it. So when we're done, it's a nice complete project.
Patchwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, there won't be any patches.
Okay. I think that's all for now.
Um, so along the lines of Fred's letter.
Hi, I have a quick question, Carrie. Amy is back online, but she's in the audience. Could you promote her back up? She got cut off and, you know, whatever, and so she's been trying to get back on, so, thank you.
And it's Amy Dunlap.
One thing while she's joining too is, um, we had discussed the snow at design review. And there are a lot of snow, um, areas, but if it filled up too much, the chief had talked to Scott DPW, and he said that the, um, town will remove it. So we just recommended that we get a letter and stating that for the planning board, and I think the chief or Lori was going to reach out to him.
I did. I, I sent him a message. I haven't received a reply as of yet.
Yep, thank you.
Um, okay, and so Fred, I know we got this letter late in the day, so I don't know if there's any comments you want to address now? Or you want to take time to look at it and come back with, um, replies? I mean, obviously you saw the one about the waiver that was not recommended, a couple of other things in here as well, um, that Fred had commented on. So anything that you want to speak to about it, or you want to take some time to look at it?
Um, yeah, we can review it, and then, you know, if we have any specific questions, we can, uh, just contact Fred. But I, I think, you know, we can probably accommodate his comments. You know, that extra crosswalk we may want to think about. You know, keep the existing one, but I think the others.
Okay, um, any board comments or questions of, for either letter? Um, I, oh, sorry, Jana, you have something there?
I, I just wanted to mention, um, when we talked about that earlier in the day, I know that Fred's time is limited. So we're going to channel our questions through Lori Connors, and so she can make an arrangement if there needs to be a meeting or call. That, that we're not randomly calling, and we understand he's retired and working part-time, so I just wanted to mention that. So, um, I'll direct, it'll come through a, a regular channel and go through Lori.
Okay, that's great. Um, so a question from me would be around any sort of noise mitigation. So I don't know if, um, the team has received any sort of public comments we get, but we received a letter from a, in a butter. Um, just, uh, really about some concerns about noise and, and suggestions, actually really good suggestions, suggestions for just mitigating some of the noise, whether it's by way of, um, some of the white furs or, um, any sort of, you know, has there been a baseline noise study so that maybe we come back in X period of time and, and decide, you know, is there, what does the noise look like, you know, six months down the line, or, I'm just curious of overall plans for noise mitigation.
Amy, do you want to comment or do you want me to take that? Um, I, I can tell you that we have not done a noise study. There's nothing to study yet because it's a quiet site. Um, certainly, I know that the fire department might, uh, chief might comment about how, uh, how fire trucks, it's really an operational decision. I don't, um, want to speak to him, but he can speak to when the sirens actually have to be turned on. There is, um, I know there's concern, um, uh, about light and, and as Ray described and, and Jim Jackson described. All the light is, you know, dark, dark sky, so we, we won't be throwing light off onto, onto other properties. So it'll be, um, maybe a quiet that way. I mean, it's a fire station, such a twenty-four seven occupancy. Um, but, you know, the fire department as a whole is a relatively, um, um, quiet group of guys, I think. Uh, chief, could you comment about that at all, if you're still here? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still here, although my battery's almost dead in my laptop. I'm going to have to jump back into my phone in a couple of minutes, probably.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I know the concern, and, and I saw some of her messages about well, about using the siren. We only use sirens when we have to, right? So we, we come out of the station at two o'clock in the morning. We don't use the siren unless it's right in front, unless there's a car coming right down the road and we have to. Um, that's when we use them. Uh, so if we're coming out of there at four o'clock in the afternoon, yeah, we're probably going to, going to use them. But the sirens, it's important to understand are directional, right? So she's from Twenty Monroe, she's behind us. She's not going to hear the sirens most likely. You may hear the air horns. But here, she'll hear a little bit of the siren, but it's not pointed at her house, so she won't hear that. As far as she had made some suggestions about changing the sirens we use, that's not an option. We have, you know, we have, we have sirens that we purchase that are in all of our vehicles, and they have all different tones and, 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 and uh, she had talked about using strictly a, a single, they use in Europe. We, we don't use that. It's not normally recognized here as much. Um, but yeah, and we, we do have policies when they're used and when they're not used. So it's not just a arbitrary, make as much noise as you can when you leave the station.
Okay, um, what about the validity of maybe adding trees or thing on top of the retaining wall to sort of mitigate sound there? Or any sort of fencing or consideration for that sort of, um, sound mitigation?
Um, we did add trees, um, the, you know, doing some kind of the barrier wall. You know, we'd have to talk about that within the design team, but we, we, we tried to buffer that property as much as we could with vegetation.
Okay, and before I open up for public comments, any, oh, Amy or something?
I just have one more. Um, I was just wondering, is the apparatus bay fully occupied upon moving? I know you had said that we went to up to eighteen.
Yes.
It is?
It's fully occupied, but there is room, so it's not, as it is now, where the trucks stacked on top of each other and all pushed in. That's not going to be the case with this, right? So we'll have room in between the truck. All of our apparatus will be able to get inside the station.
I was just thinking, you talked about expansion for the next forty years, like, if they needed newer, bigger trucks and you needed extra trucks. With the wall, there, is there any place to expand on the site?
Yeah, I, I, I don't foresee us needing any more trucks. I see trucks getting, obviously changing sizes. But when that happens, you lose one truck, you get another truck. I don't see the trucks getting to the point where we can only put one per bay or whatever. We also have, currently have trailers that we use that will eventually age out, and we may not use those anymore, which will open up additional space inside.
Okay. Okay, Andy, um, Lori or Bob, any comments or questions from you? Okay, all right, so when I open up for public comments, this is a public hearing, so we welcome the public to comment at this time. If you raise your hand, I will, um, allow you to comment anything from the audience at this time. And Millie, of course, you are, uh, in a butter in this situation, and welcome to comment at this time as well. If you want to, um, mention anything as in a butter, um, that's welcome too. Um, okay, so far I have one hand raised, so hold on, I'm going to bring you in. So, um, Grace Williamson, uh, if you just state your name and address or your address, please.
Hi, Grace Peter Williamson, hi.
Oops, you're cutting in and out a little bit for me. Can everybody else?
So Grace Peter Williamson, I'm at Twenty Monroe Street.
Great, okay, we can hear you now.
Yeah, my, my wifi's been in and out, apologies. Um, so yes, I submitted my letter, um, and, you know, for folks that don't know, we just, we just bought our house on May sixth. On May seventh, we received the notice from the town that was actually forwarded by the previous landowner. So this is all a surprise to us, and we're trying to catch up pretty fast. Um, and I've been, you know, I've been at a meeting before for the, the new firehouse, so I know some of you had met me, but there are, you know, I, I like some of, I like a lot of the designs, but most of the designs are really focused on what the town sees. I don't see a lot, while there are some trees, I don't see a lot of mitigation for, like, opportunities or tools or whatever the right word is. But really addressing some what the butters need and the neighbors need. Um, and I know that's a town meeting, again, I'm catching up, but six cedar, white cedar trees are not going to be enough for either noise mitigation. Again, it's going to be public parking now, so now we're talking the potential of trash, you know, it's going to be public parking, there's going to be more noise. You know, just the whole unknown of all of this, which is why I suggested a noise study maybe a year from now. So that, like, or a year after the building's in, so that we have the baseline of nothing now. What is it going to be like? You know, we need to have a ground zero of, this is what, what noise is, as the town, you know, natural hum. And what is it after the firehouse gets put in? You know, what is it after the public parking lot gets put in? You know, what are the types of things that are going to be addressing potential, and I'm only one neighbor with family? But what are, what are the opportunities to address those concerns in the future? And, you know, including property prices as well. Like, I did not know that there was a firehouse going in. I had no idea. I knew it was adjacent to town, but a bank and a firehouse are two very different conversations. So I'm just trying to make sure that our investment is, is protected as much as it can be. That I picked this spot because of it being near a town, but it also had a nighttime sky. It also had the quiet hum. Um, so those are where my concerns are coming from. Again, trying to catch up after being, only living there for a month and a half, it's really been a struggle. But I appreciate the opportunity to comment, and thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your letter as well. Um, okay, so I guess, uh, what Grace, uh, had obviously sent in the letter that I referenced earlier. So, um, thoughts from the board on that or comments or from the applicant at all of, are there, are there, has there been consideration to, you know, to the point about making sure, you know, looking to the butters and trying to make sure it's a good, you know, as much as it can be in the flow of where it is, is there, has there been that consideration at this point in the current plan?
Um, I could only say that the public parking is as far away from Twenty Monroe as it could be on the site. Uh, but that is one good thing. We had originally planned for it to be on the east side, and it was moved to the west side, which is all buddy in the commercial property. Um, so I hope things, I mean, the parking that is in the rear is fire department, once they come in for their shift, they park. They don't leave, um, during their shifts, so they live there. Um, so I could comment on that. Um, and again, the frontline vehicles, but leaving on the west main, not of the northern elevation rather than the southern. But obviously, there'll be trucks, as the chief pointed out, they do not have to have their sirens on, um, until they're well off the site. Um, you know, at some point, um, I think, um, the fire departments tend to be as a whole relatively tidy people. They stay there, they make sure the site looks good. I don't know what trash we're worried about. Uh, we do have a dumpster, so we have a closure, so, um, all of the, the, the stuff generated by the building itself will be contained. Um, so, um, I, I think that's all, I know now, we just got the letter ourselves, so we haven't had a chance to really digest it. Um, but, um, you know.
That's okay, right.
That's, that's it, so.
All right, um, Mitch, you have something there?
Um, yeah, just to, to add to that, it probably would not be within the bounds of the construction project of what we're talking about here to look a year later, or, you know, even, you know, more than that to, to check noise and everything like that. The benefit of this, this is a town-owned facility, so as a town, we have a responsibility to, uh, to be as kind as possible to our neighbors and to address issues later. Uh, I can't think of a way that we could do something like that and still close out the project the way we'd want to. Um, you know, to, to budget for the architects to stay on board for a year or two after completion. But, um, you know, I, I, none of us want to be overly disturbing to neighbors. Um, I can also tell you from, uh, my own experience, I live pretty close to the existing fire station. I'm not a direct butter, but I'm not too far away. It's not very noisy. Um, it, it, very rarely do I hear sirens or anything like that, um, coming from the facility. I, usually if I hear a siren, it's coming up my road as opposed to from the fire station.
Yeah, and so what we do, Mitch, is we typically would do like, we'd have like an acoustics engineer do a baseline study, and then we would have a condition of approval that, you know, in X period of time, we would do a comparative study. And so that would, it wouldn't really necessarily mean like architects stay on board, it's more switches over to acoustics. Bill, you have something there?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it, it, does it make sense to do a study of the current fire station? Uh, um, the noises shouldn't be that much different between one and the other. Um, I mean, I know the buildings are different, but um, that at least might give us some type of baseline as to what the, you know, what it could be.
And then it's, I think, what is it, five or X decibels over ambient noise, I think, is the threshold for in our performance standards. However, I guess with a siren, you'd be exempt. You can't like, the siren, you can't, you know, chief, I've, you probably just picked up on that, so go ahead.
The, the other thing is, if you, the current station wouldn't be a, a, a good option because we don't exit right onto the main drag, so we come out on the Pier Street, then we turn right, and then we, we don't actually have issues normally until we either hit the intersection third street or the other way. So if you were at the fire station and you tried to get an, an ambient noises of every time the fire truck leave, you were getting up. So it wouldn't be an accurate study.
And plus, now I'm thinking that they are explicitly exempt in our bylaws, any sort of safety vehicles.
Even on Bartlett Street, weren't the vehicles exempt, like?
Safety sounds, like reverse the, um, beep when you reverse, all of those things are exempt from sound.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but, but I'm thinking more, um, you know, I, I understand there may not be anything we can do about it, right? But at least get a study done, so at least we But at least get a study done, so at least we have something, so. You know, we can say, you know, we took a look at it, maybe it does, you know, maybe we do need some trees. Right? Even though I, I understand that, you know, it's, it's, they're exempt. But, you know, does that give us a little bit more ammunition to say, you know, we may need some trees here or some other type of barrier?
Uh, okay, we have another comment from the audience, Tom Riordan, just your name and address, please. Hey, Tom.
Good evening, Tom Riordan, Seven Sunset Drive. Uh, I am a member of the fire station committee and I was. Gonna point out that this fire station is gonna be on a state highway. So when you have twelve thousand, fifteen thousand cars. Passing by. More, more likely that's gonna be the greatest source of noise rather than the operation of the fire station. And planting trees will have very little effect on controlling the sound transmission. Because you don't have enough density. You need like a hundred feet of planted trees to reduce the decibel level. So I don't think using trees for acoustic treatment is feasible, maybe for visual buffering. But trees don't, don't help very much. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Got it, thank you. Okay, other public comments. Okay, at this time, it looks like we have no further public comments. It does sound like we have a couple of outstanding items here.
And I just had one more quick question. Sorry, I always think of something when other people are talking. Um, and we were talking about the parking in the back. And this isn't really as much for the noise, but the wall being thirty feet high. And I know that the design guidelines say you don't want, or even our bylaws say you can't park, you can't have any parking in front of the building. But. If you. Pulled the parking, I, I can't see the whole, I don't know if it's your screen or my screen, but can you move it so you can see the street? Yeah, so if the parking in the back there on the, um, west side. Moved closer to the street, if you pull that whole parking lot forward. Would you be able to move the parking port enough that you could take down some of the thirty feet of the wall? Would it make enough room that you could bring down the wall some? So if you take the spaces up there?
I think I can take that because we've been asked that question before and we did a, a quick study to see if we took those seven or nine. I don't know how many seven spaces, whatever, right there that Jim is highlighting. Out, we would be moving the, the wall forward and we still have to deal with the transformer and the dumpsters, but we pick up about. Two to three feet of height only. That's it. It's very, very steep there, so it doesn't, um, it doesn't, it doesn't give you anything in my book, two to three feet. And, um, and, you know, so we've, we've already looked at that and we, you know, we'd have to step the wall and then we'd have to deal with the transformer and the dumpster. And it all, well, does change and it does drop down, um, you, because you could see this, the, the, um, grades right there, three thirty, three thirty, one thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty. You could see how tightly bunched they are and then you could see how they begin to spread apart a little bit. Um, as you go east on the property, three twenty-seven, three twenty-six, three twenty-five, where it kind of does the, um, the zigzag behind the transformer. I mean, the, um, uh, generator and the dumpster pad, so we're picking up like two, two to three feet. And, um, not, I'm not thinking that's definitely the way to go on it. It would make even the detailing more complicated to continue to step it every time we go down a few feet. So, uh, we did look at that before, so.
Okay, how high is it in the middle? I'm just trying to get a, a feel for it. It's thirty feet. On the west side and then the middle and then the east, I think is twelve to fourteen?
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah, so in the middle here, it's about, um. About, uh, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six feet here. And then it gets down to about fifteen feet when you get all the way up.
Yeah, so it does drop by half by the end over the course of it. That's an approximate number, you know. Um, and that's the batter wall portion as opposed to the, um, to the straight wall section. Straight walls on east and west, batter wall on the, on the, um, the, the north side.
Yeah, this shaded area is kind of showing the, uh, the batter, how it's.
And the terracing wasn't chosen because it was too expensive?
Yes, yes, this was, this was a big expensive ad to do the batter and then the, the, um. I think, I can't remember the exact numbers, Amy, I'm sorry, but the, um, I think we stopped double it.
Yeah, it was cost that we were also chasing the project further back into the hillside, so it was getting higher. And more disturbance to the tree line, so it was, it seemed like the batter was the.
Yeah, because we, we had like ten foot tiers and so we, when he's saying chasing back, he's like pushing back further into the limits of disturbance line. So, you know, with everything, he was going back further into the site. And we were really trying to maintain that line, sort of lining up with the old driveway from Monroe Street too. And we don't want to get back further into that as well, so.
Was that because of the parking lot that is proposed possibly for the future?
Possibly.
Of our neighbors?
Um, it was, you know, we were trying, well, we were trying to keep it to a minimum, uh, everything we did. Um, but that was one of the, one of our, one of our, um, design issues that, uh, people were concerned about. It was, the bigger chase was on the, on the west side though, I believe, Jim, right? Uh, where, where the grades were the most complicated, you know.
Yeah, so every time we had terrace and you go with the, um, the level portion, you're just pushing everything back further into the hillside. So our, our disturbance line is, you know, the disturbance we push back.
Right, and you can see the grades don't, they don't loosen up.
Getting higher and higher, yeah.
They're getting higher and higher, there's not going the other direction, so they don't level off, let's put it that way, favorable for anything else, so.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so, uh, we do have a couple of outstanding items, um, so why don't, we're gonna continue the hearing. To, we need to figure out a date to continue the hearing. Is the next, the next available planning board meeting is May seventh. Is that too soon to do what we need to do or?
Um, we had it, um. The next planning board is May twenty-first, we heard, uh, a date of May twenty-first. Is that also a meeting date for you?
Oh, uh, yes, it is. So, yep, that's this next one available in May, so we have.
Okay.
On the seventh and the next one's May twenty-first.
Yeah, um, so, um, we, we spoke into Lori setting up the master schedule, um, for all the meetings we have in, in the May twenty-first. Which we would be required to get drawings in by five, uh, five fourteen and that gives us a couple, three plus weeks to answer and, and deal with, um. Um, any questions that come from the professional staff, Bob, Lori, um, anybody from the board itself. And then, um, so I speak to Fred and try to resolve all those issues. So the next time we come back, we would hopefully, hopefully have all, all the, um, answers that, um, you need to hear. And, um, so the sooner we get them, the better, but, you know, it could take a couple of weeks to get it all together. So we were planning on, um, the May twenty-first meeting.
Okay, great. So, um, Lori, a question for you. Uh, last town meeting, we voted to accept the, um, Mullins rule to allow for a planning board member who's not here. So Anthony is who I'm thinking of. Um, is that something that we need to declare at this meeting or he can just re, review the minutes or whatever the requirements are for him to participate in the next meeting?
Yes, so what will have to happen is he will have to read a statement, uh, prior to closing the public hearing. Um, on the, uh, twenty-first, assuming you folks will close the public hearing that night. So in his statement, he will have to attest that he watched this, uh, public hearing. Um, and that he reviewed all of the submittals, uh, that were received during this public hearing. Um, and then he will sign a statement, which I will then attach to the decision.
Okay, great. Uh, I know we just need a simple majority for the site plan, but it's, uh, since Millie's has to accuse herself, it'd be good to get a fourth member in the mix. Okay, great. So I think we have some outstanding items. Um, if there's no further commentary, I'm gonna, um, ask for a motion to continue the public hearing. For the, um. Let's see, continue the public hearing for the consideration of the application for site plan approval submitted by the town of Northborough for the construction of the fire station. At sixty-one, sixty-five West Main Street and ten Monroe Street in the downtown business district and groundwater protection overlay district area three. For May twenty-first at six P M.
I'm moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor of Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye, so we will continue the hearing to May twenty-first at six P M. Thanks so much.
Could I ask one quick question, um, Carrie? If, um, this Anthony person, I don't know his last name, if he has any comments. Will we receive any of that beforehand? I'm just wondering how that works and if he doesn't read it till the last minute, then he has questions, we might be able to close it out. I was just, just trying to think ahead here.
Yeah, so he, it's Anthony Zaitin, he's a member of the planning board and I think he could coordinate that through Lori, so we're obviously not able to convene outside of our public meetings. But I think either, I guess directly with, with Lori is probably the safest bet. Lori, do you agree with that? Is that something he could work through you to?
Yes, absolutely. So if he has any comments, he want me, he wants me to convey to the design team. I will ask him to email those to me and then I'll forward the email to you folks. So I'll ask him to review the meeting and the submittals as soon as possible. Uh, cause certainly I understand your intent is to close out on the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, okay, thanks so much. Appreciate your time. All right, so why don't we shift over? And for the purpose of the minutes, Millie Milton is back. Uh, next on our agenda, we have the continued public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning map and of the following sections of the Northborough zoning bylaw as listed in the agenda. Um, I presented alongside Lori, um, the proposed amendments at the last board of selectmen meeting. And I, as one item, I just wanted to share some comments and Lori, feel free to jump in. I know you heard, uh, it was specifically related to the Makerspace, I think was a lot of the questions. Um, so coming out of that meeting, I don't know if anyone had a chance to watch it or, um. I, I don't think the minutes came out, but either way, um, questions were, probably, I think there were a couple of questions, just clarifications on the groundwater bylaws. Um, and then some questions that I, um, Mitch Cohen's been going back and forth with Lori a bit about, um, Makerspace. And just making sure that that bylaw doesn't actually backfire and have unintended consequences of shutting down. Um, you know, the library wanting to do, you know, pottery making or whatever. And Bob, I know you chimed in on this too, and Lori and Bob, it sounded like you both felt like that's not a, a danger or any, any way thing that we should. I mean, obviously the warrant's printed, we, we'd have to be an amendment on the floor, but is there anything we need to consider on our end of backfiring or whatnot?
Since, uh, since Bob is the one who's gonna interpret the bylaw, I'm gonna kick it over to him.
Oh, sure, okay. Bob's thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, um, Lori, like you said, Lori and I discussed this. You know, people going to the library. To learn new things, you know, the general purpose of the library is to educate and inform and, and entertain. Um, so, you know, in my experience going to the Grafton Library and the other libraries. You know, people, you know, doing three D printing and learning how to do whatever the library is teaching is educational. Where I see a, um, a Makerspace is when it becomes some sort of a commercial or business arrangement where you've got to pay a membership fee. To a landlord or a company or whatever to enter into a building that is primarily commercial in nature. Okay, so, you know, somebody is, um, um, owning and maintaining a commercial type building. Um, where people can come in and pay either a membership fee or a monthly rent or a stipend or something. Uh, where they can go in and they can, they can, they can do their Makerspace activities. You know, um, and, and it's everything from, you know, stained glass to woodworking to fabric, to, you know, art studios, to, um. Uh, furniture making, it could be a darkroom, which would be really cool. But, you know, the, the, the component with that would be that there's some sort of money changing hands for somebody to be allowed to go in and use that space. Okay, that, that, that's where I see the dividing line, you know, whether or not the people who pay to go into the Makerspace sell their. Products or if they give them away or whatever. That's neither here nor there. Um, because, you know, some people could be making things to give away as gifts, some people could be making things donate to charity or whatever. But I, I see it as the, um. It, it, the, the definition of Makerspace is where you, you, you're actually, um, as a maker, you're paying some type of a landlord. To, to go onto that property and use that property. Okay, uh, you know, like I said before, a library is, 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 it's a learning space. You know, it's an information space, it's a, um, information, entertainment. You know, people can say they may want to learn how to three D print. You know, because they've never seen it before, they don't want to buy a printer, they just buy the media. And they, and they go in and make something a library. I'm, I'm not gonna consider that a Makerspace.
Okay, does, does the language of our current bylaw support your interpretation, like as it's written? Would you be able to point to it and it would like support that interpretation or?
I, I'd have to review it again. I've read, read it a couple of times, um, and I find that when I read things two and three times, I kind of settle into a. Um, you know, a, a, a feeling and whether or not it's gonna be adequate or not. I'll give it another look, see, uh, tomorrow. Um, and I should be able to respond to that, but I, I think it's reasonably well-written. A- as is. You know, I don't, I don't imagine any real big language changes, but I'll, I'll look at it again tomorrow.
Okay. Um, other than that, Lori, can you recall anything from the meeting that, um, stood out to you as needing the board just to at least know there was a consideration?
Um, well, there were some questions about, uh, the zoning changes. Um, so definitely we should be prepared for some additional questions, but it did seem like the vast majority of the. Uh, concerns were regarding that Makerspace definition. So, uh, I think, uh, we should absolutely be prepared for similar questions at town meeting.
Okay, and then I know you sent over, any questions from the board on that or your own observations? Okay, um, you sent over some new zoning maps, Lori, is that something you want to speak to? Is that?
Yes, actually, if you would make me a co, um.
Yeah, sure.
I can share my screen.
Oh, I can't do that. Oh, and do you have the power to make Lori a co-host or give her power to share? Okay, there you go.
All right. All right, so these came in very, very last minute, actually during the meeting. So I have not had the time to, uh, review this version. Um, although I did look at it quickly during the meeting. Um, so in, a- and I'm certainly interested in your feedback. Um, so if you think this is zoomed in too much, uh, let me know. Uh, when I had spoken with Dave, I had suggested that we have like a full, uh, version of the zoning map on one side of the page. And then we have a blow up on the other side of the page, so it would be, um, two-sided. Um, so, uh, two different maps. Um, so it, what he sent me is slightly different than that. So of course, uh, this, this first view is a blow up of, uh, this is Article forty-nine, the downtown sub-district. Uh, so he, uh, did the hash marks, uh, which is what I had asked him to do. Uh, so this denotes the overlay and then you can see what the underlying zoning is underneath that. So he did say that, um. It's hard when you project on the screen, uh, so you, you, you want it to be relatively simple. Otherwise, uh, it's difficult for the audience to interpret. Uh, like I said, I was anticipating making like two hundred copies. Uh, which would be handouts at town meeting, so people would, um, would have those in their hand as well as on the screen. So are there any comments on this specific view before I go to the other two?
So is it already printed in the warrant and we just have to let everybody know that's, okay?
No, no, this is a draft that he just sent over to me.
No, I know not this one's in there, but is there a previous version in there?
No, so I, I had, uh, told, um, the town administrator's office that I was waiting. that I was waiting for a more professional looking app, uh, from G I S. And, uh, so it wasn't my desire to have the version that I had previously provided uh, in the book itself. So I would, uh, print these myself and those would be handouts on the table. So when people receive their books, they would receive these handouts.
Okay, comments on this one then? Does it look okay to everyone? Amy, you have something?
I was just wanting, could you point out where the Harvey is? Like I'm looking at.
I have my arrow over it right now.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So it's a, it's a five acre piece. Um, so of course, this is the town hall property. This is Heritage Village. The condo development is just to the north of that. Harvey is this big parcel that goes all the way down to, um, Main Street. So I asked him to use the G I S to calculate five acres. Um, because we wanted to make sure that everybody knew that this was five acres. So one of the corrections that I'm gonna ask him to do is actually write five acres on here. So it's clear, um, that this is five acres. So there is a piece, um, of the, uh, downtown neighborhood district that won't be within the overlay. And then this portion of the property is in the MSR district. So then this is fifty-six Hudson right here, and this is the undeveloped parcel identified as zero Hudson.
I just had a, a quick question, like I know with like the downtown revitalization, there was always talk of maybe being mixed use on like the main street side and the Hudson Street side. Like, I was wondering if, and, and this would have to be up to everybody. Like if it would bo- be bumped in a little bit more off of Hudson Street. Or you probably couldn't because you need it for the driveway. For, um, downtown revitalization, how they had, had pictured it.
Well, that's what I tried to explain at prior meetings. The MSR does not allow commercial uses. So there is no option to do mixed use on the MSR portion of the parcel. So, uh, chances are you will see, you know, maybe single-family homes or you'll see duplexes, multi-family is not allowed. So the only possibility of doing mixed use is that the downtown neighborhood, there's limited mixed use allowed here. Um, but this one, of course, in the M D O D would allow mixed use. But it would have to be on the first floor, of course.
Hmm, okay, I just was trying to figure that out. And my first question was gonna be, how did he measure the five acres? But you, you, uh, told us, so thank you.
And so Bill is presenting this map.
Yeah, I mean, it does look a little bit skewed to me, so I'm gonna verify with him. Like it looks like this piece is bigger than this piece. So I'm gonna ask him to just verify again, although there is a, a little leg here.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, with him, it says five acres.
You, you, like if someone starts to ask, I guess Lori can jump in too, but are you comfortable with this map, Bill, presenting it, knowing which the properties are in there or?
Yeah, I think for the, for the presentation, I may actually use both. Um, you know, the one that we originally had, that Lori originally had, so you can see it from a, excuse me, from a real view. And then use this one maybe at the end just to show, you know, this is what it looks like without the trees.
Yeah, because otherwise you're gonna get a million questions, okay?
Right.
I wonder if the underneath property lines could be darker, just so you can see where the property's lines are.
I can ask him to darken those up.
Well, that might be helpful too.
I, I think that would be helpful.
Other than that, are, are you folks okay with that? Do you think it's clear enough? Uh, um, I, I asked him to put the street names on there, so we have River Street, we have Hudson, uh, we have Main Street.
Yeah, I think if Bill shows that other piece that he just mentioned, that'll be helpful to put it into better, a little better context.
And the colors match what's currently the zoning colors are, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
So it always looks a little bit different printed out versus, uh, projected on the screen.
Hmm.
But they should match, uh, our, our current zoning now.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on to the next one. Okay, so this is the southwestern, Southwest Connector Sub-District. So once again, I wanted, uh, the underlying zoning to be clear. Um, so he's showing it as the same, uh, line hatch.
Hmm.
So once again, he's got the roadways in there. Um, certainly, you could still use the ortho photo, Bill, um, in the presentation. You can even do them, uh, you know, one after the other, or, hey, you and I will talk.
Yeah, yeah.
To figure out the best strategy, yeah, figure out the best strategy for presenting this, so it's clear.
Yep.
And the benefit of the ortho photo is we're identifying the key properties. Uh, so I got the properties labeled, so that should help with the orientation.
So it is, um, the acre, you had sent down an email that there was an acre added?
Yeah, so that's this little dog leg here. Um, so when Dave was preparing this map, I didn't really notice it, like I thought it was like an easement. Um, but it turns out it's a totally separately owned parcel. Um, so it's not owned by this about, this property owner or Avalon. Uh, so we had to include it because otherwise our district would not be contiguous.
Oh, so it's like a strip and they just own that line?
They just own that line. I suspect that they own this parcel right over here.
Oh.
It's, it's in another town, so I can't see.
Hmm, in the triangle is the landscaping company?
No, the, uh, this triangle right here
Yeah.
is the landscaping company. This one is currently forested.
Where's the catering? There's a catering company on the corner, is that in this map or is it behind the triangle? Or maybe it's in the blue in front of the line.
I think it might be in the blue because this is definitely a forested parcel.
Hmm.
And then, of course, we have the highway and this is the O'Connell Lodge and this is Avalon and this is that undeveloped one acre strip.
Okay, I was just trying to get my bearings straight.
Okay, so we're okay with this one? Okay, and, and then, uh, this is, uh, the other district. So I asked him, uh, to use a slightly different color purple. Uh, so this, of course, is a brand new district. Um, so it would change the underlying zoning, so I suggested that, uh, well, uh, uh, Millie, I think you're doing this one?
Yes, I am.
So you would want to make clear that this entire area is currently pink, so that, that's it. So now it's proposed to be changed to this light purple color.
Obviously, well, then if that, uh, the multi-family goes through, will that be, are you presenting before I present?
So the, um, Bill is going first. So I, I didn't want, so I don't know what's gonna happen. So I wanted the articles to be completely separate in case one passed, but the other one didn't.
Right.
So you're, since you're going second, you're gonna know whether this is gonna get, it was approved or not.
Right.
Um, so when you explain it, you can say that these parcels, so you can point out that these parcels are in the M D O D.
Yes.
So we've got these four parcels right here. So on the finished product, these are, are gonna, there's gonna be an overlay on top of this area.
Depending on what goes through, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I just don't see it in the key right there, see the zoning, oh, it's on top.
Yep.
Rose.
Yep.
Okay, I missed that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I, I asked him to do the same here, so you see it says proposed up top.
Yep.
And I know, um, I did bring up the highway business southwest and, and wrote it or helped write it. So I don't know, Millie, if you want help or you want me to do it? Because this is something that's been talked about since I've been on the board. So I just wanted to let you know, it's up to you, if you want to do it, you can do it, but if you want me to do it, I'll do it.
I wouldn't be unhappy to give it up. Let me just put it that way.
Although I already submitted the names of who's gonna speak on what. Administrator's office, I don't know if they're gonna be upset with the shakeup, but.
Maybe you're just on standby or something?
Um, an amendment on the floor.
I could stand, I could sit up near you and then I can jump up if, if you want me. I'm not the best on town meeting floor or public speaking anyways, you'll probably do better than me.
I don't know about that.
I could get up for questions or, or however we want to do it.
I think it would look odd if, you know, if questions came up and I was deferring to others because it would, could look wishy-washy. So I think, you know, either if you should, if you can take it, if you want to take it because you feel more solid or comfortable with it, I, I'll, I'll, I'll trade, well, no, I guess we can't trade now. But.
It's up to you, I'll take it if you want me to, because I don't mind doing it. I just didn't want to put you on the, you know.
I, I mean, I don't think.
We can just give hand signals to, you know, yes or no, to let you know.
And will these maps be added into the slideshow? The presentation?
Yes, um, so once they're finalized, I, I will add them into the presentation. Um, Bill had some changes that he wanted me to make to the presentation, some minor changes. So if anybody else has some changes that they want me to make to their slides, if you could send those to me in the next, um, I'm actually off on Friday, so if you could send them to me by four P M tomorrow.
I have to finish my taxes. But I do want to look at it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody, because of course I have to provide the presentation for them to combine with all the other presentations, so I really can't make any changes, uh, after say noon on Thursday.
Okay.
So. So if you could give them to me by eight A M on Thursday at the absolute latest.
Okay, just not enough hours in the day, as you probably know.
I do, absolutely. So what are we doing with these, uh, these articles? So it's, um, fifty-two and then, uh, so the map is fifty-two, so the bylaw is fifty-three. Or am I leaving it as Millie being the speaker or am I changing it?
I, I can give it to Amy, I think she's definitely more comfortable with it.
Okay.
I'll probably faint this year. I'm the worst one up there, like I feel like I know a lot about things, but then I get tongue-tied so easily.
Well, it's hard when you have two hundred people looking at you.
Right. Throwing darts.
Hopefully won't be overly difficult.
Right, I wouldn't think so. We've talked about it for years.
Yeah, and I think people might, for the most part, be okay with maybe some less industrial, a little bit more commercial and mixed, yeah.
Well, thank goodness in a way, if we're gonna have all the overlays, so we'd have the original overlay plus a new overlay plus.
Hmm, right.
That's right.
Well, we would be getting rid of the major commercial industrial. Um, so our major commercial corridor. So Amy, that's important to point out that the overlay will go away as part of the same article.
Right, simplifies it.
Can you type that on to the presentation? That way I know I won't forget.
Yeah, I, I put it on the slide after this one.
Okay.
Where it talks about the bu- like highlights of the bylaw.
Hmm. Okay, I'll have to go back and read that. And I'll have to make sure, see which ones I have again. And then we always get a motion, right? Don't, in years past, we get printed motions the night of the town meeting floor, we get a little instruction sheet on how we do it. We read a motion and then we hand it to the moderator.
Yeah, I'll follow up with, um, the town administrator's office tomorrow to find out uh, when those will be coming.
The motions?
Yeah, so there were, um, so they asked me to, to put together the motions and then town council had a couple of minor tweaks. So, uh, I haven't received the final clean version of the motion, so I'll, I'll ask town administrator's office for that tomorrow.
Okay, um, and then we have the, I, I can share the instructions again for everybody, the procedures, so, um, I'll, I'll share those via email as well, but based on how we've done it, it's we sign the motion, read the motion. If it's a longer motion, you can say as printed in the warrant. Um, it has to be seconded, so we have to wait for that second, so we always forget to second each other. The last minute. Uh, and then you deliver the signed motion to the selectman or Fred, um, sometimes the selectmen are right there and we just hand it to them. Then you do your presentation, share the planning board vote on the article. Um, this year there is no bylaw committee reporting a recommendation, to my knowledge, is that still the case?
That's my understanding.
Okay, well, plus you didn't even do a review with them anyway, so that would be odd. And then the moderator moves along the questions and discussions, so I'll forward this to everybody, um. And if Lori, if something is no longer correct about that, obviously you can just let us know.
And, uh, before we close out too, um, so we need to close the public hearing and then vote on the, um, M D O D map, that, that hasn't been voted on as of yet, so I need a recommendation on that. And then also, I, I want to give you an update on Harrington Lane. And, um, I'm gonna need who, to know who is going to be presenting the recommendation on that roadway acceptance.
I just had something to add to before we close out the hearing.
Sure.
Um, I, I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I know as being a resident and a planning board member for years, leading up to planning board, uh, to town meeting, I like to post things. And I did post, you know, there are two zoning articles that I thought were important, that if I was a resident and wasn't really, um, paying attention to the planning board or to the emails and, um, all the seven buildings were going up, or there was a new building on the railway. I just wanted to put out my two articles that I thought were important for people to know about. So I put on a post about the M V T A article and, um, I talked about how there was acreage up at Southwest and that there were, I think it was fifteen, twelve to fifteen downtown, five of them are on Harvey. And I also talked about the, um, three forty-two Whitney Street and the vote there for purchasing that as a right of first refusal. So I just wanted to put those out there to the public, so they would be aware. And I said if they had any comments to reach out, so we did receive some emails and I think some people said they were calling in. So before we closed out, I just wanted to give them the right to, you know, just say what they wanted to say or, or I could speak to the emails that came in.
Um, sure, I mean, the public hearing is still open, anyone's welcome to comment, I see, uh, a hand up actually.
Me, that was a fake out. I was like, oh, what's that button do?
Okay, um, let's see. Um, Louise Vanderkoppel, I'm gonna allow you to talk here, and I think you sent a letter as well, so if you want to, um, speak to that. Hi Louis, it's just your, or Lois, I'm sorry, Lois, is it?
Uh, yes, it's Lo- can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just your name and address, please.
Okay, Lois Vanderkoppel Smith, ninety-seven Main Street, Northborough. Um, yeah, I had, um, sent in a comment, um, to, um, your email address. I had also put a comment on what Amy had posted on Facebook, and they pretty much said the same thing. It looks as though, um, this map is different than the map I was looking at before, so I want to see, It looks as though um this map is different than the map I was looking at before, so I want to see. Um, if this map addresses the questions that I had. So my question was really concerning the Harvey property. That um I was not keen on having multifamily development overlay, just be on the. Part of Harvey that touches Main Street or or goes in that, well, if you go in a little bit further, most of that is um wetlands anyway. So it looks like we're looking at just the um. The the area that has the little um uh scritchy scritchy lines. The the part of Harvey property that would be included in this M D O D um map is only. Uh, the section that that touches um Hudson Street is, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay, and um so that area being included, it seemed um. Oh, and is those, that that five acres, is that five acres of developable land?
Um, so the the total parcel size is ten acres. Um, so the only the five acres that about Hudson Street. Uh, would be included within this new district, uh this new overlay district. Um, so that currently is um the industrial building. That's associated with the dumpster storage. Uh, so they would have to demolish that building. And um builds uh the multifamily or the mixed use units there. And just to clarify, there is no development proposal. So this is just a zoning exercise. Um, so we're not even. Clear that the property owners are interested in selling the property or doing anything other than dumpster storage, so.
Right, I understand that. Um, so, uh, but then the amount of. Uh, multifamily development that would be allowed on that Harvey property, my understanding was that they were. Uh, that um there was supposed to be like seventy-five units allowed and they'd be like three and a half stories tall. Is that? Is that still possible that there could be seventy-five units in there if somebody just plain met the zoning requirement?
So that's the worst case scenario. So they could end up just doing. You know, duplexes or triplexes. Right now, the zoning currently allows up to eight. Us uh multifamily units. Um, so this would be a slight expansion over the number of units that would ultimately be allowed. So if you were to drive up Centerview, uh Center Drive. Um, so that's Heritage Village, it's right off of Hudson Street, so I I have my little um arrow over it. So if you were to drive up there, um, that development is seventeen units per acre. Um, so fifteen units per acre is slightly less than that. So i- if that gives you an idea of what the worst case scenario would be for this striped portion. Of uh the property.
Yeah, and and those um those units are just like one to two story um. Units right now, but um what would be allowed on the Harvey property would be um like three and a half stories.
Um, so currently, uh, the height for that district is thirty-five feet. So currently, it's two and a half story. Um, so if they were interested in doing two and a half story today, they could do it. Um, under the new zoning, they could still do it. There is a um height bonus. If they're interested in doing some mixed use. So if they're interested in doing, say, retail on the first floor with apartments above, they'd be able to get a ten foot. Uh, height bonus, so they'd be able to go up to forty-five feet. Um, but otherwise, they're stuck at the same height requirement as the underlying zoning. So um, you know, typically, if they, if you do a taller building, then you do a smaller footprint of the building. Because you're still only at fifteen units per acre. Um, so you can't go above and beyond that. So if you wanted to do a taller building. Then you would just uh, you know, have more open space.
Okay, so fifteen units per acre acre and the. The part of the Harvey that's included in the M D O D, how many acres is that?
It's five acres total.
Included in just the Harvey property?
Just the, just the Harvey alone.
Developable.
Um, so right now it's currently developed. So you've got that big blue uh industrial building. So what they would have to do is demolish that building. And then builds uh apartments or condos or townhouses in their place.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so the the part of Harvey that's not included there, those those aren't really. There's so much wetlands in there, that's not really developable, right?
Yeah, so this brown area here, uh, it's in a zoning district called Main Street Residential.
Yeah.
And the, pretty much the only thing you can do there, um, there are a couple of, you know, exceptions, like you could do. Municipal uses and I think you might be able to do a bit in breakfast. Um, but really, the only realistic things that could happen there are either single-family homes or duplexes.
Right, and so much of that is either right up against the the river or wetlands, because there's there's a, um, and there's a um. Spring in there as well.
Right, and so there's the Rivers Protection Act buffer. Um, so that protects two hundred feet on either side of a uh perennial river or stream. Um, so any sort of development would have to go through approval of the Conservation Commission. And would be subject to the Wetlands Protection Act and the Rivers Protection Act.
Right, right, and and that's just residential. Okay, yeah, and the next section, the next section between the M D O D and that front, that Main Street access. There's a lot of wetlands in there.
So this area right here, um, it does allow some mixed use. Um, and it does allow multifamily currently. Is, right, I, if it's all wetlands, then like I said, it really cuts down on the development potential of the property. And there's also floodplain in there.
Yes, right, definitely floodplain for sure. Okay.
Any other comments?
I just had a quick question, Lori, with that too. So that downtown neighborhood, I don't have it open. Is that eight units per parcel or eight units per acre?
It's uh, I believe it's eight units per acre. Let me just double check.
So on top of the seventy-five units with the lines, the person who bought the whole parcel. Could also do additional units by using the downtown neighborhood zoning.
So remember, you have to build a roadway.
Yep.
Uh, so then it would end up being, you know, a subdivision in order to get sufficient frontage. So in the downtown neighborhood district, the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. If you're doing a. Two-family, then the minimum lot size increases. Uh, to twenty thousand square feet. Um, so the. Let me look, downtown. Neighborhood district. So the way the uh development works, it's based on the minimum lot size, so. Says for multifamily or townhouse development, there shall be at least ten thousand square feet of lot area for the first two units. And four thousand five hundred square feet per unit for each unit over two.
Okay, so it really could get above seventy-five units there because they could do the fifteen units per acre on the five. And then they can use the formula that you just read for the other section of the yellow, so of the orange.
Well, remember, that's that's assuming perfection. So that's assuming that uh, you know, you have perfectly flat. Lot that isn't uh, you know, wet and isn't. Uh, subject to the uh floodplain regulations or to uh the Rivers Protection Act. So worst case scenario is this. But this is a zoning exercise only. There is no development proposal of any type. And chances are, because of the steepness of the slopes and the presence of wetlands and a river. It is unlikely that you will see worst case scenario.
Yep, but it could happen. Even though it's an exercise, it's allowing it by right, so. It might be an exercise, but it's also doesn't mean that. It won't happen because it's gonna be allowed by right, and that was the purpose of the.
It's still subject to site plan review and all of the design standards that exist in the zoning bylaw. Plus the supplemental design standards that are proposed for this bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I look at what was done on the corner of Main and Brigham and um. I mean, that was so sho- shoehorned in there, these these um multi-use units and. You know, the pe- the neighboring people could practically spit out their window into the windows of this. The um multi-multi-use development that was put in there, so. You can say, well, it does doesn't look like it's really desirable for somebody to to do anything with it, but they do. And then after the fact, after it gets built, then we say, oh, rats, I didn't want that to happen. So, okay, well, at least I understand what's going on here and it unfortunate that it's this close to the actual. Um, uh, town meeting, because we're kind of put in a box here. We don't have any other choice other than. You know, if we don't, if we don't, if we say we don't approve it, then we're we're jerks because. Now the town can't get money and all this other kind of stuff, so we're really put into a box here, and that's unfortunate. I'm I'm sorry. Okay, I understand what what's going on now, though.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see. We have another hand in the audience, um, Nadine Proctor, just your name and address, please.
Um, uh, could you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, got a box up there. So Lori, every time you explain that map to me, I feel like lost, but anyways. Um, I just want to say that with my experience with the stop and shop. I found that um conservation laws and all that that we have in place to protect rivers and wetlands. Aren't as strong as I thought, and I think many people think. Wetlands can be filled in as long as, there's a professional word for this, and I don't know it. As long as they make another one that's larger than what they filled in. Okay, so all that wetland area and the floodzone area, they can do things. So that's all developable as far as I'm concerned. And um if this zoning passes. You have taken an obstacle away for a developer to come in, a big obstacle. Because now it is zoned for what they want to do with it. It's a parcel, it's an opportunity to make big money, the M B T. M B T A community law has really help, is helping towns to get this to work and to happen. There's all ki- you guys know, it's all kinds of tools, there's all kinds of money and all that, there's all kinds of presentation tips and so forth. But I'm really uh really think this was a poor choice in decisions on sub-districts. I think um. I- it's it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood in the middle of a um. Uh, an area of town that has a lot of beautiful houses, they're old historic houses and buildings. I've been here since two thousand and five. When I first came here, I was like, oh, this is beautiful, oh my god. Now, it's like I drive by, I don't see them anymore. But if you really stop and look, this is what makes this town unique. This is what should be built on. This is what makes Northborough special, not like seventy. I I don't know what you um found for um height, but I looked it up and it's ten feet per story. So if you're talking thirty-five and a half feet, you're talking three and a half stories. Okay, that's what I looked up on the web, looked at multiple sources. Um, so those are, those are big buildings and seventy-five units is a lot of. Wall with windows on it, you know, that's a lot. It just. There's nowhere else except for Avalon that I know of in this town that has that kind of massive building. And you want to put it in the center of town to support businesses, to support another project, you know, the master plan. That master plan doesn't fit in with what's unique to Northborough. And it doesn't take any consideration, and I think a lot of um decisions are made um. By kind of like not thinking about it, like that poor lady who bought her house and then found out about the fire fire station. Oh, well, there's always a casualty. Oh, well, there'll be casualties with this. This isn't right, and I know you guys did everything by the law, your public meetings, you you um. You know, posted in the newspaper, you did all that, but there's one thing you didn't do. You didn't, you weren't considerate about the neighbors. You weren't considerate and made sure that we knew about it, because a lot of these folks around here did not know about it. And that's really upsetting to me. And some people say, well, that's business. That just, that doesn't cut it. So I really would like this subdivision, the downtown subdivision to to be removed. And I don't know if you can do that before the town meeting. And if you can't, again, I think Lois made a good point, you put us in a really tough position. But the good news is your deadline's not till December thirty-first. So if it gets voted down, you can come up with another plan. You've got a hunk of land already identified and you only needed five more acres of contiguous land. And it does not have to be this site, not with those massive buildings.
Okay, uh, anything else? Um, Lori, just a question for you. I think you were um not feeling well at the last meeting, but we. In terms of notifying the abutters, um, we, we are obligated to do a public hearing notice, but not in a butter notice is correct for. This particular.
Uh, so we notified all of the property owners. Um, so, you know, we sent the notifications to the owner of the gravel pits. And uh certainly uh the owner of fifty-six Hudson, and we sent it to um. The owner of uh seventy-seven Main Street, et cetera, Housing Authority. So we notified them. Um, as a courtesy, certainly we weren't required to do so, but we did. And uh however, I did not notify all of the butters. I'm not quite sure. You know, there's almost sixteen thousand people who live in the town, so uh that is uh. Uh, a mailing that I could not afford to do with my budget.
Oh, go ahead.
What we did do, uh, the town manager, a town administrator, uh, and various department heads did. Do a show to talk about the various warrant articles, um, and that is available on the um. Uh, the uh remote meetings page as well as on cable, so uh we really are trying to put the word out.
It can be hard. Anyway, thank you for your comments. Okay, any other?
A couple of emails I can read if you want, that came in too.
Oh, yes, sure.
There was one from uh Suzette Spitzer. And she said, thank you for posting to the Northborough Community Group about the zoning. Um, that's the most concise and clear explanation I've come across. If we can lower the number of acres and therefore units, I would love to see that. Seventy-five units in the center of town would be incredibly disruptive to traffic patterns in the overall town. Let me know if there are other actions you recommend to have our voices heard. And um, so that was one email, and there was one. It says, um, their planning board, the idea of seventy-five units downtown at the Harvey location is very troubling. To my husband and I, as longtime residents of this town, thirty-two years, we are not happy with the direction some want to take. We understand the goal for some people is to revitalize downtown, but this is not the way to do it. Bringing more housing in congestion is not going to make downtown a reason for walking any more than we already have. We know this because we reside in the downtown. For this proposed action is a, is the tail wagging the dog and not a good reason to force houses in the downtown. It will only create more traffic headaches on a very scary intersection. Harvey is right across from Summer Street, and it's already a troubled spot, especially at rush hour, building here really concerns us. Um, and then there was talk about Stop and Shop where the traffic was a problem for that. And um, lastly, we feel not many people even know this is happening, they will complain when it's too late. Thank you, Carolyn and Christopher Harrington. And there were a couple of posts online, but I don't really wanna, you know, there was a couple of people who said they didn't want their name. So I won't bring it up, but they were also wanted to see the site. Made a little smaller, that seventy-five was a lot of units.
Laurie, I, I have a question, is there any opportunity, because that seems to be a, a catching point for a lot of people. To make amendments on the floor about the size and, and add acreage. For instance, you found an acre in. The um, industrial. Would, I mean, if, if. If somebody proposed making the Harvey acre now only four acres and putting the extra acre over there. Now you're down to possibly sixty buildings or units.
You know, I, I, I really don't think it's appropriate to, to make this a unit exercise. You know, here we've been talking about a massive rezoning of an industrial district to the highway business southwest. And there has been no discussion whatsoever about, you know, commercial square footage that would result from this. So I, I, this is the first time I have ever come across a circumstance where. There's no development proposal whatsoever, and you're trying to decide. Uh, zoning based on um, maybe of what somebody may or may not do. I don't, I don't understand it, honestly, uh, you know, whatever. Uh, on the town meeting floor, the important thing is you can't change. Uh, massively the scope of the article. So. I imagine if you pick a location that hasn't been part of any prior discussions. And just add it to the zoning, uh, that may be a problem. I, I can check with town council and see.
The thing is, I mean, I just think, I, I'm concerned it won't pass because people keep throwing out the seventy-five units of being. Concerned, so if there's a way to modify that to even just sixty units.
There are no units. Proposal. Important thing is to specify this is a zoning exercise, there is no. Zoning proposal, I don't even know if it would be possible to fit that number of units in, given. The um, you know, there are significant slope issues. Uh, between the town hall and uh, the river. So, this, this is all a guess.
Yeah, I, I, and, and that's something I understand because I've been through all of these meetings, but. I'm, you know, I have some concerns that people are just gonna reject it outright because they hear this number and they don't understand. The bigger elements, but.
And I have a concern too, like, when we're saying this is just a zoning exercise, because that's misinformation. Like, it's not.
It is a zoning exercise.
Once it passes, it's allowed. By right.
But you're just guessing that somebody is going to be interested in developing this property. I mean, maybe, maybe they will, maybe they won't, it might be dumpster storage for the next.
Yeah, they have to sell it first, obviously, yeah.
They were, they, they were re- reached out. And uh, the town administrator was told that they're not interested in moving right now unless the town were to find them a. A piece uh, elsewhere in town that they could move to, so. I, you know, I, I think getting people excited to think that there is a development proposal. Is, is kind of unfair, I feel like we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Because there is no development proposed.
I don't think any of us are saying there is, it's what they're hearing.
I'm just gonna let Scott, um, Roger, I just have another. No, that's okay, I just wanna, um. Let's see, um, hi Scott, just your name and address.
Yeah, hi, good evening, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tomahawk Drive. Yeah, I think, you know, the, the board has been. Um, discussing this for so many months. That at this point in time. Your role is to represent the consensus of the board. And help the residents understand. Uh, where you're going with this, what your intentions are. And so, the. The reaction to input from residents right now, uh, is understandable, but. I really think your responsibility is then to represent what your tents are, right now. Your current discussion is looking like divisions within the planning board. And, and at this point, you're at the end of a whole series of public hearings. And you really have need to represent the consensus so that this goes forward. Your, your recommendations go forward to town meeting and are successful. And so, you're, there's some distractions in the current conversations. That I think are undermining your intent. And, and it's. I, I'm, I'm worried that you're not gonna be successful at town meeting. And I think some of the postings to social media and some of the discussions. Are working against your intentions at the moment, and, and so, if you can. All of you. Represent why these are good articles and why these need to go forward, then I think you're gonna be successful at town.
Okay, great, um, thank you. Okay, looks like I have another, um, Nadine, I can't tell if it's from before or something new, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if it's something new. Hi Nadine, just your name and address.
Did you say Nadine?
Yeah, I was, I didn't know if you had your hand up from before, it's a new hand.
I do, I just wanna say that, yes, there is no developer, look. As, as we know it, looking at these properties to develop, but I'm gonna stress again, and you call it an exercise, I call it. Once this is passed, if it is, I hope it isn't. You've cleared a pathway, you've cleared an obstacle for a developer to come in. Okay, Harvey Dumpster Company was bought out by a large conglomerate from Canada. Um, the scuttlebutt on the street is from Harvey people that they're gonna be. This company's gonna be downsizing and getting rid of places, so these, this land may very well be available sooner than you think. Okay, and um. It also, uh, uh, so when you say that, you know, we're kind of overreacting. This also goes along with Laurie, a plan that you have to, to increase density within the downtown to um. To help support the revitalization. Okay, so there's a little bit of conflict, it may not happen, but yet, it's part of a plan that. Would work for revitalization, you told me about this community zoning. Or this community model that works to do that, and again, I just, I, I'm just not. For this at all, and I really still think once you pave the way, they will come.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Okay, other comments from the board on this?
I just have one more. I just, I just think it's misinformation again to say it's a zoning exercise, because like. They say, you know, you build it and they will come. And we have developers reaching out to us about all different sites that they wanna be part of this. And I just, the baseball fields, um, the Hudson Street.
I have not heard of anybody come to us about the, the Harvey property.
Yeah, I said that there are other developers at other areas.
Me is, this is the work that you folks have done, and now you're sabotaging yourselves at the eleventh hour.
We're not sabotaging ourselves, but it.
You did that by posting it on social media, you're getting what you want, you don't want that multifamily in the downtown area, so you posted it to, to rally the troops. To get your opinion proven.
No, I wanted the people to know, like, I think as a resident, you have a right to know what's coming before it comes. And, and last week, we got an email saying we're adding an acre to the industrial site. So we added an acre there, we're up to sixty-two acres, why can't we take? An acre off downtown, we can, right now, we could if we really wanted to as a board, we could say we only want four acres, because. The map just changed for the southwest, nothing, and they're gonna print out a new nap, map, it's not, until we vote tonight and accept it. The map isn't done. So I thought it is only fair as a resident to know what's coming down the pike. When we did the downtown revitalization, even our master plan implementation committee didn't come to a consensus of what. We considered high density, and we said before any high density came, we were gonna get input from the people. About what they perceived as high density, and we haven't done it, and. I just think as a resident, it's fair to know what's coming, so if they wanna go to town meeting, they can. I wouldn't wanna be surprised. In six months from now that it was hidden from me, or that I was told it was just a zoning exercise and it wasn't gonna happen, because. I would wanna know. It could happen, and that's how you have to decide your vote.
Okay, well, what does the board wanna do um, going forward with this, are we going with what we have and having amendments on the floor, are we? Reopening, what is the board's desire?
I'm comfortable moving forward with what we have.
I, I'm comfortable moving forward, I don't have any issues with the plan as it is now, I just, again, have concerns. How residents. May interpret it.
Okay, and Amy, I think you're.
Yeah, we did add an acre to the industrial, and now we are up to sixty-two acres, and. And that was on misinformation too, we thought we were losing acres because of wetlands, but we didn't. So since we have extra acres, we could take some off. And, and because of that, yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna support it.
Okay, so, but it doesn't sound like we, we have a majority that would, without Anthony, we kind of have a. We're kind of stuck, so I think um. If there's, if there's no ability to move forward to changing it, then I think we have what we have. Um, and I guess we've revoked, we need to revoke Laurie with the new site map in it.
Double-checked the last meeting, and you didn't vote at the last.
Oh, we do, okay, we did not.
Not on the map.
And one more, um, Scott, I think you have something there, I'm gonna. Hi Scott, did you have something there?
Yeah, thanks, I just wanted to clarify too, I think I heard Laurie mention that. Any development plans would go through site approval through this board, correct? Yeah, so then there's, there's your opportunity to um, mitigate or. Alleviate any concerns that residents would have through this like process.
But you couldn't limit the number of units that way.
Well, the number of units is based on the Massachusetts laws.
It's depending on how many acres we choose.
Yeah, so you've, you've chosen well, you've got a plan that you've iterated over for several months. I think you need to get behind the plan and not raise a lot of fear and uncertainty and doubt. Um, I don't think you're dealing with misinformation. I think you've got a solid plan that you deliberated, deliberated on for several months, and you need to get behind this. I've gotta credit Mr. Frederico for being more, for saying what uh, I wanted to say. Don't sabotage yourselves, you're gonna, you're gonna be unsuccessful in town meeting if, if you continue to operate in this way. All the board members need to get together and represent the consensus of the board.
Thanks, Scott.
We added an acre to industrial, I think if we took an acre off, I would be okay, but don't do it for me.
Um, that reminds me, there was a question at the board's local meeting that I forgot to bring up, um, it's not even, it's not something to, they just asked about. Similar to what Scott just said, if somebody came through, could you then like say, oh no, we actually only want, you know, X number? Uh, but, but in my mind and how I answered Laurie, were you there at that time, or you may not have joined yet? Once the bylaws in, it's by right, you can't then say, oh no, we don't want you to have this number of units, so that's, I think, one point of clarification that.
You know, a site plan review is still about mitigating impacts. So, you know, there's still parking requirements, there's still. Uh, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act that they have to abide by, so there, you know, uh. Good building practices, there's stormwater mitigation, uh, there's flood plain, so there's. A lot that goes into ultimately the number of units. So, you know, for example, if, if we had a bylaw that said. That uh, you can fit five units on uh, one acre of land. But then you have all these wetlands uh, issues and uh, the parking requirements are the same. Then they're not doing five units, they might only do two units, so even though it may be a. By rights, uh, site plan review process. They still have to abide by all of these things. Um, so, it is likely when you have a parcel with significant. Uh, problems associated with it, significant environmental limitations that they won't be able to build out to the maximum.
And we talked about that before, but we said, can we run a scenario where we could show how many we could fit on that site using the setbacks? Using the wetlands, but we just, it was too much of an exercise to do, so.
A similar exercise that was done on the fourteen acre piece across the street. So, you know, if you take fourteen acres and you times it by fifteen. You end up, I'm gonna do the calculation right now. Two hundred and ten units. But you already got a development proposal for that uh, fourteen acre piece. For ninety-seven units, and the reason why it's ninety-seven units is because it's not physically. Or financially viable to build two hundred and ten units. On a parcel of land with significant slope constraints and significant rock outcroppings. I mean, maybe if it were located in downtown Boston, it would be financially feasible to build two hundred and ten units there. But the land costs here in the town of Northborough don't make it financially feasible to do that. So, in that example, we were looking at ninety-seven units.
Yeah, but to counter suit that, they picked three and a half acres off of Hudson Street and they fit ninety-seven units. On three and a half acres.
Because that's the buildable portion of the site.
Right, but we don't know what the buildable portion is of these five acres, it's just, I guess, whether it's a guess you or it's a guess for me.
And I don't believe it was three and a half acres.
Millie, did you have something on that?
I just feel like we have gone over this already, and we've made our decision on the uh, properties, so. I think at this point, it's moving forward.
Okay, so um, why don't we, and I'm sorry, Laurie, I know you answered my question, it sounds like. We did not vote the last time on this at all, so we need a, just a site map portion or the entire?
Just this article, this one article having to do with the creation, uh, the modification. Of the um. Uh, the zoning map to include the M D O D district, overlay district.
Okay, so is there um, a motion to recommend the modification? Of a zoning map? Changes in the, oh, my writing's too small, I'm sorry, yeah, guys. The zoning map modification of the down, down, I'm sorry, the. Multifamily district overlay.
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor, Millie? Amy?
I have to make a statement with it, well, of course, you've already heard my statements, like, I, I think the bylaw is great. And I think the zoning is in the right spot. I just, for myself, and from what I read from. The master plan that we did in twenty twenty. I feel that seventy five acres is is high density in that one area, so. Although I I do like the bylaw and I do like the area, I do think it should be lower density. So for that, I am, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, and Carrie is an I, so we are. Going forward with it as is, but then I think, as we talked about before. If there are members that have, if there are people in the audience that wanna, you know, make amendments on the floor, then we'll have to. You know, that that could be the case. So I think what we had discussed was, um, as residents hear about it, they could kinda. You know, Laura, you mentioned that there's some limitation maybe in the modifications. Um, so I guess we'd have to think about that in advance.
Uh, I don't think that they can pick an area that has not been previously.
Right, 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 but yeah, but it changes to the acreage, um, I think we talked about doing. Okay, so.
I'm sorry. Clarify with town council, like, if it's the same area and we're already over our. If we're over our um fifty acres, over our seven hundred and fifty units, if someone made an amendment on the floor. And asked to say only three acres on Harvey, I'm just throwing it out there, that would not. Be against an amendment, I would think, because it's the same parcel, we're over the numbers. So if somebody wanted to do that, I don't think it would be. But you can ask town council if you'd like, but I think that would be within the realm.
Okay, so it sounds like just we may need to understand um what is acceptable for, uh, uh, it sounds like um. If there were to be modifications on the floor or proposed amendments on the floor, we would just, well, what I, here's why I wouldn't want it to happen. Laurie, if this helps craft it, like, if somebody makes an amendment and it's voted on and it's accepted, but it actually makes the bylaw invalid. What, I mean, we'd be in trouble, so I guess that's what I'm just would try to avoid at that point. Do you know what I mean?
Yep, me.
Okay, um, all right, and then in terms of you have a, oh, I think we have um two other. I think um, just, I'm gonna let two people that haven't been able to speak yet, just uh if you wanna take a minute, um, Carolyn Connor, just your name and address.
Uh, yes, hi, sixteen Saint James Drive. Hi, did you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, go right ahead.
Um, just being two streets over from that lot and having been in town long enough to know that we voted down the stop and shop to go into that spot. Um, and the concerns actually as a parent and educator, um, what is this gonna do to the school systems? And how much is this gonna overflow into Peaslee and Z?
Yeah, I think we had a, oh, Laurie, go ahead. Were you gonna speak to the superintendent's message?
Yeah, so um, if you if you go to on the planning department page, there is a link. On the left-hand side, there are a number of maroon buttons. And one of them speaks to the MBTA uh zoning changes. And there's a bunch of information on uh that webpage. Um, so there's a link to the superintendent's report. So you can see um that there has been a significant dip. In the school population over the last uh nineteen years, so I believe the. Decrease in school enrollment is uh over four hundred students. And then uh it also includes the forecasts for the future. Um, so from uh two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the two thousand thirty-three, thirty-four school year. Um, so they are anticipating that the school enrollment figures will uh. Level up and uh go back to the figures that uh were more similar to. Two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Um, so the schools, uh, you know, of course, there, there may be challenges. Um, based on population numbers, like there may, and I don't know what those are, but. The um, the report is available on that webpage and you're welcome to look at it, so they have the. Enrollment figures for each grade. So you can see if uh say second grade has a large class versus fourth grade, which has a very small. Class, so a lot of that just happens to uh be based on. Population figures um that change every single year. Um, but uh, yeah, I mean, multi-family housing um does not. Uh, especially if we're talking about studios and one bedrooms and two-bedroom apartments. Uh, they tend to have much fewer children uh than a standard single-family home. Uh, so there are very few children that result from multi-family developments as opposed to. Single-family developments statistically.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question, and um one last comment and then um we'll move on from there, I think. Sue Fenerty, just your name and address.
Hi, yes, I'm also on Saint James Drive, Sue Fenerty. Um, eh, my issue is with traffic, how has that been? Uh, researched um with both the uh. Um, the near the um, the. Wegmans area as well as the town hall area, the the um. Harvey area, so. Are there, are there um, is there research in terms of that? That that seems to be a real concern.
Yeah, so um as part of any sort of development proposal, uh, the applicant would be required. To do a traffic study, um, so this is for any large development, so if somebody's just proposing to do a duplex or, you know, a small. Maybe four-unit development, then uh it's not typical to require a a development impact statement. Uh, but for any other development, uh, they would be required to do a full traffic analysis. Um, so at this point, there is no development proposal. Um, there has been a talk, the vast majority of the land, uh. Of course, we're we're talking about Avalon, um, which of course is already developed as three hundred and eighty-two units. Uh, we're talking about uh properties in the downtown that are already developed. Um, so if they were redeveloped, then you would be losing out on the traffic that currently exists from whatever. Use, like, for example, the town offices. Uh, right now, you have all those people who are working at the town hall. Uh, so if that were redeveloped into housing, you wouldn't have any of the traffic associated with the town hall. Uh, you would have um whatever the redevelopment is, so let's assume it's apartments. So you would have traffic associated with the apartments instead, so it's really hard to say. Because there is no development proposal, um, but that will be done at the time.
I see, I see, thank you, um.
Thank you. Oh, shoot. I didn't realize there was a second thing there, um, okay, the, sorry, um. Sue, did I cut you off there? I didn't know if you had something else.
Oh, sorry, yes, um, I thank you, Laurie, for that explanation, um. Is there a penalty or a fee if we don't comply? With this mass mandate? And if so, what is it? Is it? Huge, is it not, uh, you know, completely not, um, uh, you know, feasible?
So you may have read in the newspaper, uh, there there have been a number of articles in the Boston Globe about the town of Milton, which happens to be my hometown. Um, so they uh are not complying with the bylaw, so the Attorney General's Office is currently. Uh, seeking litigation against the town of Milton. Um, and they revoked grant funding that had been awarded, so I believe they received a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and the um, the state sent notification that they would no longer be honoring that grant award. Uh, so they were revoking those funds, so. Um, pretty much, uh, the vast majority of the the grants. Uh, that I was interested in applying for for downtown revitalization. Also, uh, the, I've been working with the DPW director on a potential sewer extension project to. Uh, Route Nine, uh, we would not be eligible for any of those grants.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna, these are gonna be the last two comments and then we're gonna close the hearing, so um, let's see. Matt, I'm sorry, I don't know how to, if you wanted to say your name and address?
Donovan, eleven Saint James Drive. And uh, my comment is the downtown area, I'm my property abuts River Street. And apparently I'm not in a butter, which is interesting. So I didn't get any information, but my general comment is. This is to me confusing, I don't know how many acres you're dealing with, you keep changing it from five to ten. Multi-family dwellings, there are fifteen in the proposal per acre. And as I understand, three dwellings per. Uh, multi-family site. And if you use just two and a half people in a dwelling, that's well over a hundred per acre. So if you do ten acres, there's a thousand people in that downtown area. I don't know how many people you're actually gonna get, I don't know how many acres you're gonna use. I think that if you're gonna propose anything, the Avalon area is one I could support. The downtown area I simply cannot support. It makes no sense to me. You're gonna overdo, you're gonna change the character. I don't see the value in doing any of that.
Thank you for your comments. Laurie, did you wanna comment on the, if there's a thousand people or not, is that?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it it's really hard to respond to these comments because there is no development proposal. So right now, the vast majority of the land is already built. Um, so you you know, you have the town hall occupying the town hall, uh, you have the housing authority. Occupying, you know, the Heritage Village, so um. You know, I can't tell you whether they're going to be studio apartments or one bedrooms or two bedrooms, or whether they're gonna be, you know, duplexes or. Uh, seventy-five units or ten units, I, you know, it's all supposing. Um, but I don't see how it would be possible for seventy-five units to. Uh, create a thousand people, I mean, i- if you have a one-bedroom apartment. You may have a couple, uh, chances are you'll have one person living there. Um, you know, in a, in a studio apartment, you have one person. Uh, in a two-bedroom, you may have two people, you may have two people and a baby, um. You know, but I I don't know how it would be possible to get to a thousand people that way.
Right. Okay, um, if no further comments, comments, then is there any reason to leave the hearing open? I don't, there's nothing left on our. Um, I'm sorry, I am looking for the agenda, which I don't. The Harrington, is it Harrington we need to cover?
Yes, because I I do have the update, so if you remember, um, for for Harrington Lane. Uh, there were, there was a punch list of items uh that we had asked. Uh, for the developer to comply with by April fifteenth.
Yes, hold on, I'm just looking for that email, okay, hold on a second, Harrington Lane acceptance, and then, one second, I closed out my Adobe files. So I just need to pull up the agenda again too. Uh, but bottom line, Harrington is not part of this um. Public hearing, so we could close a public hearing?
Correct, it's a separate issue.
Okay, great, so that's that, um, and I'm sorry, I can't find the agenda on my. Files here, but that's okay, so we have um the public hearing, is there any reason to leave it open still, or can we close it at this time?
I would recommend closing because you you have to vote your recommendation. And then um, give the recommendation at town meeting.
Okay, but we did all, we voted on all our recommendations throughout the course, so we should be done, we, now that was the last vote we had at this last one.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, you're already voted that, so if you could just close the public hearing, that'd be great.
Okay.
But it was good that we left it open because Lori, if you you found that extra acre. And we had closed the hearing, we wouldn't have been able to allow that, right? So it is good that we left it open because the MBTA is, has been changing all year for all the different towns, so. I do feel it was good to leave it open.
Okay, so the, is there a motion then to close the public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning map and all all the sections of the zoning? North Row zoning by law, chapter seven, as listed uh in the agenda? Second?
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna give Millie obviously the motion, Bill the second, all in favor, Millie?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
Carrie's an I. Okay, so that's closed, now let's move on to Harrington, so hold on a second. Okay, so for this one, you just need somebody who's going to present it at the town meeting.
Yes, and also, uh, so you already made the recommendation to. Uh, the Board of Selectmen to lay out the roadway, um, but the the way you made your recommendation was conditional. So it was suggested that they meet certain uh milestones uh by April fifteenth. So, uh, I asked Fred to do an inspection. And he supplied this letter this afternoon. Um, so that letter um demonstrates, uh, actually, I can share the letter if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. Here we go. So what this letter does is it demonstrates that he was able to comply. Uh, for the most part, uh, with the punch list items, so there was uh. One of the the things was that there was an understanding that we wouldn't get sufficient uh grass growth. By town meeting, because of course, it's next week and grass hasn't really grown over the winter. Um, so he already had received a pass on that, um, but. Fred's recommendation is once again, make that conditional. Um, that the grass growth occurs prior to the transfer of the roadway. Um, to the town, so that deed transfer typically occurs. In the summertime, usually around July or August. Uh, so he did do uh the sidewalk repairs. Um, so if you remember, uh, a portion of the sidewalk was located outside of the right-of-way. Uh, so the recommendation was to remove that portion of sidewalk and redo it. So shift the drive, uh, the sidewalk into the right-of-way. Um, so unfortunately, they got a little messy where it came to uh this specific location of the sloped edging. Um, so they're required to to put the sloped granite in concrete. And they did not do that, and they have to butter the joints. Um, so I received confirmation from the developer uh that his contractor is gonna make that repair tomorrow. Um, so no, there should be no issue with that. So my recommendation uh to you folks, oh, and then there was also the issue of the iron pin. Um, and in the email uh that I received from the developer. He said that the ir- iron pin was not buried, uh, so when he goes out to uh repair. Uh, the curb tomorrow, uh, they're gonna spray paint the iron pin. Uh, so it'll be easily uh visible. Uh, so it'll be easily uh, visible uh, when Fred goes back out to inspect. So my suggestion is uh, to recommend in favor of uh, town meeting um, accepting the roadway as a public way conditional upon um, the, the repair to the slope granite edging. So as soon as I receive confirmation from Fred uh, that the, the edging was repaired, I'll send you an email. So then whoever is making the recommendation uh, will know that that has been satisfied.
Okay, so, but we'll have a motion to do that, the, like, similar to our, that we don't have to make a presentation, this is just a motion?
Yeah, so it would just be, um, well, of course, you, you have to vote it.
Tonight?
Vote your, vote your recommendation. And then um, so at town meeting, uh, you might want to suggest uh, that the uh, Board of Selectmen um, not accept the roadway if there is not sufficient uh, grass growth uh, by the time of acceptance, which would likely be July or August.
Can we just say, um, we vote on the acceptance, um, pending the completion of, like, all of these items? It's just a, as referenced in this letter, or?
That would probably be the easiest way of doing it. Sorry, I'm a little tired, so it's hard for me to think on the fly.
No, that's all right, no problem. Um, okay, so, but you're saying we need to make a motion now and also at town meeting. That's what I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, so you will be giving the recommendation.
Okay. Okay, but we are not the um, the town, the, is, is this, I guess, does the selectman have the final, it's the town that has the final vote on this. There's no additional action by the selectman.
Yeah, so I can, I can prepare a motion for you, which essentially says the planning board recommends that the uh, town meeting accepts uh, Harrington Lane as a public way um, because it was built substantially in conformance with the subdivision rules and regulations and the definitive plan. So I can, I can supply that motion to you, um, as long as that reflects that, what the majority of you say. So your, so your recommendation would be reflected in the motion, if that makes sense.
Okay. Yep, great. So for tonight, we need to vote on the recommendation. So then is there a motion to recommend to accept this public way pending the conditions listed in the letter from Fred? Oh, sorry, I'm thinking I'm looking at my own document and it's yours. Okay, um, as of today, Fred dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Carrie's an I. Okay, so then we'll just need a motion at town meeting for that. Um, and I did, I do have my agenda now. Um, okay, so we have minutes to approve. So no A and R's, lot releases or bonds, it looks like. So minutes. Um, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from March fourth?
I didn't have a chance to read either minutes.
I didn't.
I have too much, so I was wondering if we could bump them.
Sure, yep, we can. We don't, I don't, we didn't have a majority then, um, either way. So we'll bump the minutes from March fourth and March nineteenth. Um, any subcommittee updates?
Design review's gonna be meeting with um, the fire station one more time on May ninth. And then um, that's about it. Did we have to vote on who was gonna present Harrington Way?
Oh, shoot.
That's, I'm sorry, that was, I was thinking of that as I was speaking.
Um, does anyone wanna present Harrington Way? Is it at the end of all of our bylaws?
It is.
So I guess it doesn't matter if it's the very end. Does anyone have a desire to just read the motion for Harrington Way?
I'll, I'll take it. I was gonna say I am, though.
Really made a good trade tonight. I don't know.
I, you know, I'm just like.
Walked in with a tough one, left with an easy one. Good job, Millie. Okay.
I did wanna add something too, because last week we talked about the design review committee. And then an article was written and a lot of the members were very disappointed because you know, we do have a member who has a joint degree in landscape architecture and horticulture. And he has run a successful business for forty years and he went to Cornell University. So for the article to say there was no one experienced on the committee. And there's also Mark is an industrial designer, principal engineer of design engineering with a mechanical degree. And there's a member who also has a certificate in landscape architecture from Harvard University. So when that article came out, they're very disappointed, you know, to see that in the paper. Because it's their livelihood and their business and they're only doing it, you know, to help the town. So I just wanted to point that out, that that, you know, and they're very disappointed that the community advocate didn't call to fact-check their background at all. They felt it was very dis- ingenuous to actually just post something that was said at a meeting without fact-checking anything about their background.
I, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, they were really, really mad to the point of almost quitting. So we might not end up having a design review.
Yeah, no, I, I feel like that the article was um, not well researched or um, well-supported. I mean, things were said and that's what it would reported. It didn't make them actual or fact, facts.
Right. And there was even another fact stated about the roof being asked for and then taken off and blaming the design review. And we went back and listened to the transcript.
Yeah.
Where it said some shading up top would be great. Whether it's done with shading that comes off the building or shading with tables or whatever. Um, but something, but I'll let you guys investigate that. So it was totally sent out there as it wasn't said, you have to do this. It was, the wording was, I'll let you guys investigate that. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't anything strong. I could read the whole transcript, but I only wanted to to read a bit of it. And, and so I felt the whole article and discussion was taken out of context, unfortunately, but I just wanted to speak up for the people who, who aren't here tonight.
That's too bad. For the citizens petition, that's something that they obviously get up and make their own presentation and whatnot, as I recall. We have nothing to do with that, but our, we have a recommendation on that. So it, do we, once they present it, they must get their own motion and second, and then the planning board interjects our recommendation, or how, what's the segue to that one?
Um, I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
Sure. So we held a public hearing for them to present the citizens petition and the planning board voted um, to not in support, unanimously non-support. So wh- what point do we interject that recommendation um, based on the fact that they present the motion and the presentation and whatnot?
Right. So um, the moderator should defer to the planning board for the recommendation.
Okay. All right, great. So we'll wait.
No, he should call you up uh, to make that recommendation. It, it is, maybe it'd be good to know which of you wants to make that recommendation? So I can let him know.
Um, Amy, do you wanna do that as the chair of design review, or do you?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I could, I could say it.
Okay. Uh, okay. Okay, great. And then um, next planning board meeting, we have May seventh. We also have May twenty-first. That's obviously when the fire station's coming back around. ZB meeting is not until May twenty-eighth, so it looks like skipping April. And MPIC is the cup, this week, April eighteenth. So I think uh, if there's no other business before the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved.
My second?
Second.
All in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Carrie's an I. Meeting adjourned, thanks.
See you next week.
Night, everyone.
Good night.